All right, I'd like to call to order the February 12th, 2024 Mount Lake Terrace Planning Commission meeting to order. Could you please take the roll?
Commissioner, Chair Batista?
Here.
Vice Chair Harrison?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Betcher?
Present.
Commissioner Stenson?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Landis is in need of an excuse for tonight.
Would anybody like to make a motion for an excused absence for Commissioner Landis?
I make a motion to excuse Commissioner Landis from this evening's meeting.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to excuse Commissioner Landis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Hearing none, that motion carries. Commissioner Landis has an excused absence for this evening. All right, moving on to item number three, approval of the January 22nd, 2024 minutes. Does anybody have any changes or corrections to those minutes? I am not hearing or seeing any, so we'll go ahead and declare those accepted as presented. Item number four, public comment. Let the record show, there is no public in person. Do we have anybody online who wishes to speak?
There is no one currently online, and no public comment was received.
All right, so we'll go ahead and move on to item number five, comprehensive plan update.
All right, good evening, Chair Batista, members of the planning commissioner, Vice Chair Harrison. Let me share my screen. Okay. Okay. So today's, the purpose of today's meeting is a continuation of our planning commission presentation series on the Vision 2044 Comprehensive Plan Update. Today we'll go over a brief recap of the Wednesday, February 7th CPAG meeting. CPAG is the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group. Secondly, a discussion on vision statement alternatives based on the previous planning commission meeting, review updated growth alternatives to be studied, and the environmental impact statement. Again, this is a continuation of this discussion item. And then, majority of the meeting will, will be doing a sub areas workshop, so for about 30 minutes, Sierra from OTAC will lead that activity. And then, we, some brief next steps and prep for the February 26th meeting. So I want to introduce Sierra Carson and Mandy Roberts. They're our consultants on the comprehensive plan advisory, sorry, comprehensive plan project. All right, so on February 7th, we presented the updated growth alternative framework. This was based on feedback that we received from the planning commission, in addition to feedback from the comprehensive plan advisory group. So, we received, it was well-received, the updates to the framework, so we are confident that what we're presenting to you today.
Recording in progress.
Oops. So yeah, what we're presenting today will be fully vetted from the CPAG group. We also gave a brief update on future engagement activities that we're planning for in the spring, so early spring. This is centered around the draft, environmental impact statement, alternatives development. And then, we facilitated workshop to gather feedback on the draft, land use and housing element goals and policy concepts, which I think was a great activity. And overwhelmingly, I think the majority of the group were supportive of the policy concept that were presented. There were some clarifying questions, but we're confident, again, that what we're going to present to you is fully vetted through this group. And then, I know Commissioner Betcher was there. I don't know if you had any comments you would like to share on the February 7th meeting, or any observations?
Sure. So, there were several questions on, so in addition to the growth framework reviewing tonight, there was also discussion on housing policy as well, which I don't think we're reviewing tonight as well, correct?
What we're going to introduce tonight.
Okay. Comments are generally supportive. I think there were, what kind of sticks out in my mind is there was also questions particularly about what some of the elements meant. I think there are some terms that might need a little bit of clarification, which maybe we have seen a little bit of update on tonight. And then, possibly one or two missing points that were introduced, that might have been introduced tonight for us as well. So I can provide further commentary if requested, as we go through reviewing the presentation tonight.
Great.
I'm just curious, you kind of indicated that the majority of the group approved. Was there any kind of outstanding disagreement that wasn't resolved, or would be covered in the presentation?
Are you saying, in terms of the growth alternatives?
Yeah, you just, you said the CPAG group, it said the majority of the group approved.
Yeah.
I'm just kind of curious if there was some vocal dissent, or?
No, I would say almost everyone, everyone actually.
Okay.
Was supportive. There was no, um.
Sorry, splitting hairs here.
Maybe Sierra can expand.
I would say from the CPAG group, we got feedback on sort of, you know, which policies and goals that really resonated with the group, and additionally, feedback on what policies or ideas may need more clarification as we move forward, or need more questions answered, because, you know, they're new topics, a little bit more complex. And so, tonight, we'll be giving an introduction to what these two elements look like, but it'll be next meeting at the 26th, where you'll get more of a deep dive view on how that feedback's been integrated into the draft goals and policies. So, that will be part of tonight's presentation, but it'll be our next presentation, and we'll go to more detail about next steps as we make it to the end of the presentation tonight.
Okay. So nothing outstanding where somebody was very vocal, or said absolutely not, I reject this whole concept?
No.
Okay.
And yeah, so Sierra mentioned the February 26th meeting. So, we revisited what the update schedule looks like, and after discussion internally, we decided to bring content at each planning commission meeting, at least through the summer, as we discuss the elements in more detail. So, we're planning to present at each planning commission meeting.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. There's lots to unpack. All right, so we also wanted to revisit the visioning statement discussion that we had last meeting. So, we were asked to modify the existing vision statement and bring forward some alternative options. Some of the feedback we got was that the existing vision statement is too long, too wordy. There was a question about why, it just references town center. So, we wanted to present to you three alternative options that sort of are aligning with what we heard from the planning commission, but also through our community visioning survey. So, it is representative of what we've heard from the community as well. So, before I get through that, I just briefly wanted to expand on what a vision statement is in the context of a comprehensive plan. So, in terms of comprehensive planning, where we're planning for a 20-year horizon, it's a statement that's aspirational. So, it's stating what is the future of Mount Lake Terrace that we would like to see as a community, and what would the community like to see in the next 20 years. It's a statement that's aligned, so it's speaking to existing city council goals, conditions, and trends, regional planning efforts, and community input. And it's achievable, so it's tied to element goals and policies, and ensuring that what's, the policies that we create are implementable, implementable. It's not a motto or a city's branding statement, that's a separate effort that would likely be done through the communications department and city management. So, just wanted to briefly go through that. So, you're familiar with this slide. This was a question in our community visioning survey, where we asked, how well does the existing vision statement align with your view of Mount Lake Terrace in the future? Forty-six percent stated that it accurately aligned with their view of the future of Mount Lake Terrace. Thirty-nine percent said somewhat, and about 5% said it did not align, and then 10% left this blank. So, I'm not going to read through the existing statement, or maybe I should, actually. So, "Mount Lake Terrace is a dynamic, engaging, innovative, and welcoming city, with a vibrant town center providing jobs, services, entertainment, and activities, surrounded by safe, connected, and sustainable neighborhoods, with a variety of housing choices for all, pride in their network of parks and recreation programs that support active lifestyles and celebrate arts, culture, and diversity." Okay, so, now, we wanted to go through three alternative options, and sorry that the text is kind of small, and I'll be reading through each one. But as I read through each one, just wanted, if you can start thinking about what stands out, and how well do these alternatives align with our conversation that we've previously had at the last meeting? So, alternative A, "Mount Lake Terrace is a welcoming city of thriving commercial areas, safe and varied neighborhoods, a bright economy, and an expansive network of parks and recreation opportunities that celebrates and supports diversity, arts, and culture."
Number two. I just want to add to that, that what we did is we went back and looked at all the survey results in order to craft these alternatives. So, what did the majority of people say was important to them when they commented to us? And so, we tried to craft these around that.
And I can, I did some brief survey analysis on some of the open-ended responses that we got to that question, that was on the previous slide. Some of the common words or phrases that were identified were town center, housing, parks, affordable, entertainment. And then, there was also a question about, in 20 years, I would like Mount Lake Terrace to be known for. So, I pulled out the top 10 words that were stated, so safe, parks, affordable, restaurants, diversity, business, safety, and housing. So, those were some of the top words that were referenced in those open-ended responses, and walkable.
I'm just curious, part of this pie chart, you know, it has accurately somewhat, but it also has does not. Was there any kind of indication for the does not? Did they provide feedback while they felt they disagreed with it, or what they felt was completely missing?
So, if I, I believe we presented on this last time, so, and I'm just trying to remember, I believe that on the does not, I think we only got a couple comments, and it was, the questions we get, I, we had comments where like, this does not align because we really want more housing, or I really just want single-family homes. So, it was maybe a handful of people who really said that, that it didn't align. I think when we get to somewhat, you're really getting a range of responses there, some of which relate back to housing, some of which relate back to, hey, I want more things to do when you haven't built it yet, and some confusion maybe about what the vision statement is there for. So, I think it's great, we're going back to sort of, you know, what is a vision statement supposed to say for the city? Those, you know, align, and achievable, and aspirational, and accurately, again, there were some comments about, you know, you haven't built it yet, so, but this sounds great.
So, for the chair, would you like me to read each alternative, and then get into discussion, or do you want me to read each one and then have a discussion on each one?
Um, I'll kind of leave it up to everybody else. I mean, since, first of all, can people actually read the screen? I mean, I'm fortunate enough, I have my hard copy, so.
Yeah, I looked over it. I think it's good to read them. Also, maybe if you mention how, like, if each one kind of has a theme, or like, kind of how they're different, I'd also be interested to hear that.
Okay.
See, maybe, yeah, just read them all, kind of let them marinate in your mind, and then, once you've heard all of them, then hopefully you'll have formulated a.
Okay, great. All right, so I'll read over, alternative A. So, "Mount Lake Terrace is a welcoming city of thriving commercial areas, safe and varied neighborhoods, a bright economy, and an expansive network of parks and recreation opportunities that celebrates and supports diversity, arts, and culture." Alternative B, "Mount Lake Terrace is an equitable community that values safe and connected neighborhoods with access to parks, a vibrant town center, and commercial nodes, offering diverse housing opportunities, responsible, responsible environmental stewardship, and is rich in its arts and culture." Mount Lake Terrace, alternative C, "Mount Lake Terrace is an engaged and welcoming city with vibrant commercial areas, a sustainable economy, safe and walkable neighborhoods, a variety, a variety of housing choices available to all income levels, access to parks, open space, and recreation programs, and celebrates arts, culture, and diversity in the community."
And when you were putting these together, did you have thoughts on how they would be different, or like, do they have different characters or names? Like, one is the, one is the economic one, one is the environmental one, one is the?
I would say, alternative A is definitely the more succinct one. I think it's, it's pretty much to the punch. Alternative B is really drawing on sort of the environmental sustainability and equity. And then, alternative C is, how would I describe that one?
Alternative C seems to be the most descriptive of all of them. It gets a little bit more detail. And alternative B is really where we pull out town center as a focus, in addition to other commercial nodes, noting that there's, you know, many places in the city that can be vibrant, but town center is the focal point. But, you know, we have these other places around the city that can grow. And I think B and C are the two that speak to housing as well. I think that, sort of, the three different directions, or three different levels of detail, is something that it would be great to get a sort of a read on, what is the preferred sort of direction for us to go tonight. We can move, I say some words around, we want to combine a couple, but really, the goal tonight is to come away with one vision statement that we can move forward with, vetting through the community as part of our next phase of engagement. So, these are, again, our draft, and just, you know, trying to get a read on, are we hitting the mark here with the level of detail?
Can you remind me, did these, did these go before the CPAG group already, or we're seeing it for the first time, it hasn't been in front of them yet?
No, so, this is only being presented to planning commission. And then, the goal is that we have the preferred statement that we then bring back to the community.
Okay, thank you.
For review. So, yeah, I think the options here are, select one of these alternatives, or do like a hybrid approach, where we're pulling some statements from each, or you might decide I just want to stick with the existing vision statement?
I think, sorry, go ahead.
I don't want to stick with the existing.
I, I actually think, you know, the vision statement is sort of a bit more loose, but I think it's worthwhile to get community input on it, maybe with possibly multiple vision statements, if possible. Like, we have the open house, where we're talking about the, you know, the plan, and all these other things that are sort of technical, but I think this is like, worthwhile is kind of a narrative of what people think the community is. I think they're all pretty similar in substance. I don't know if, like, there's a whole lot of difference, but, you know, it's probably okay. It's not like we have, you know, one is really good, you know, we're going to be a great town, the others are going to be a bad town. But I think it would be worthwhile if we had a couple. One comment I have is, you know, we've got words like city, and commerce, and things like that. I think one of the things with the vision statement I would like to see is it references community more. Like, a city and commerce are just things there to serve the community, right? Like, you know, we are, you know, we're a town, we're a community, we're a group of people, and that group of people may change. But all these things are here to serve us. And so, like the first statement where we say, "Mount Lake Terrace is a welcoming city," maybe we, instead of say city, say community, with thriving commercial areas, central areas of livelihood for members of that community, you know, things like that. It's kind of a minor style thing, but I feel like that sort of loosens it up a little bit more, so that then, you know, we have a bit more of grounding in like, this is the people of the community.
Sure.
And we're making this community to serve us. And then, everything else logically flows from that.
Could we maybe get a pulse on the majority of the folks that like A, B, or C, and maybe start there, and then if you guys want to massage it further, then kind of go from there?
Yeah.
Does that sound doable?
Yeah, it's doable. I'll start off. I like A, it is succinct. I don't think, not, not that it's not bad to overpromise, but when I see some of the terms and some of the other things, I'm like, well, that's debatable, you know? Obviously, that's something that maybe we strive for, but it's, is it something that we really could say we are right now? So, I like A, it's being shorter. The only question that I would have, and maybe, you know, this is more splitting hairs, you know, the difference between a, a bright economy versus a sustainable economy, especially given what our economy overall is like these days. It's, other than that, I'm, you know, you know, parsing words there. I'm pretty fine with that. I'll have to respectfully disagree with my fellow planning commissioner. I think the community has spoken with their survey. We have not taken so many things to the community in the past. We get their input, you know, on a variety of things. I think we can formulate a statement, recommendation amongst ourselves, because ultimately, it's up to council, when, you know, what, what they want. I don't, I don't think we, we need to go back and open up every single portion of this to the, the community, because they've, they've provided quite a bit of input already. I think, I think it's our job to, to take that input and, and move forward, and, and not kind of go backwards. Okay?
Adam, what's your preference? Let's just start there, A, B, or C?
I agree with Chair Batista. I think my preference is A, just because it's punchier, and I think it's more succinct, you know, with a little bit of like massaging, I think it's a pretty good option. There are a couple of things in B I like, that I would like to see somehow worked into A, without increasing the word count. I think the environmental stewardship, like the, the recognition that we are sort of living in an environment that is changing over time, and doesn't have to say that, but I think that's a good option. And then, the connectedness as well, which I think, you know, if we said, safe and varied neighborhoods, it could also be safe and connected neighborhoods. You know, there's, you know, which word do you take in, which do you, where do you leave out? Like, I think those are open, but I think the two themes that I would like to see in A from B are those, the connectedness and reference to the environment.
Commissioner Stenson?
Yeah, I think my preference would be alternative A as well. It's more succinct. I do think that I'll just echo that I'd like to see more about walkability, or if you want to use the word connected, also works. When I think about how much density we're looking to add in the next, you know, few decades, it's like, I want to be able to walk to stuff, and I think other people are going to be thinking about it too, especially in apartment buildings, and townhouses, and multifamily units. And then, I would also agree with just some of the more human-centered language of thinking about like, community versus, versus the built environment, thinking more about the people that are inhabiting that built environment. But I love seeing something that's more succinct, and you can say it without running out of breath.
Yeah, like I did.
Commissioner Harrison?
I think I'm in agreement with the, my fellow commissioners, A, for the exact same reasons. I think it's, it feels more concise, it's a lot easier to absorb. I do like alternative C's mentioning of housing choices available to all income levels, but I don't think that, that element alone would, you know, move me towards C. I think A is the most, well, yeah, I like A, I guess that's the shortest way to say it.
Commissioner Thompson?
I like B, but I like the succinctness of A. So, if we could make A, because I do want it, I don't want it to be too breathy either, have more about the connectiveness and the community, like I've heard other people say, I could definitely go with A, because I would like fewer words. But, yeah, I, what drew me to B is the very things that you've bolded, the community, the connected neighborhoods, the environmental stewardship. I've, I really took me over the top on that one.
Okay. Commissioner Morgan?
I was going to say, alternative C seems to speak to what we're doing the most, in my mind, but I also agree with everyone else that, that alternative A is the easiest, I guess, combination of what we're trying to do. So, I mean, if you were, if you were to update A, maybe taking from C the expansiveness of what we're addressing, I think, is what stands out there. So, I'm sure if we incorporate some of B, some of A, or, sorry, some of C and some of B's bolded into A, I think we'd be right.
Thanks.
Where we're all trying to go, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And I do want to say, I think the question of all income levels, address, like, reaches out to like, who is in the community, right? Like, if we're a welcoming community, you know, income levels is one aspect of like, who is in the community. So, wordsmithing, of course, but I think the themes, like, they all kind of capture the themes, but I like the length of A.
Okay.
Okay, so do you want to change, "Mount Lake Terrace is a welcoming community?" And it plays city with community?
Yeah, and thriving central areas, safe and connected neighborhoods, bright economy, we can workshop that one, because the economy is one of those things that's there to serve us, instead of the other way around, and I think people often forget that. And, yeah.
I like that.
Welcoming inclusive. Welcoming inclusive community, maybe.
Yeah. Say that again about the economy, I like the way you said that.
The economy is there to serve us, and not the other way, the other way around.
Okay. So, do you want to keep thriving commercial areas?
I think central is, like, commercial is part of central, but, like, and the commercial stuff wants to live at the central, but it seems kind of more like a, you know, the thing that needs is centrality.
So, what's your word there?
Say it again?
Central neighborhoods.
What about vibrant?
Oh, sorry, sorry. Thriving central areas, and vibrant?
I'm just looking at C.
Oh, yeah.
We use vibrant down there, and I think that that could also get to the point.
So, when, I guess, if I was, I wasn't sitting here, and I looked at something, and I said, thriving central areas, does that mean town center?
I think it means all of our central areas thrive, and the central area could be town center, it could also be, we're making some new central areas possibly in some of the alternatives.
I mean, I know for me, I'm not, I'm not quite feeling central area. I think it can get a little confusing as to what specifically you're talking about. I mean, if you're thinking just purely on a neighborhood point of view, you know, in Seattle, there's a central area.
Mm-hmm.
But that's, if you break it down, that's actually comprised of many sort of subneighborhoods that don't get mentioned a lot. You know, I think that whole area is probably the size of our city. So, it. Turn your mic on.
I, I would just encourage connected over walkable, and the reason that would be not to, I mean, just for you guys to consider, is when you say connected, then we're really talking about all forms of connectivity, not only pedestrian and walking, by streets, and transit, and other things. So, as we're kind of planning in 20 years, what does that look like? Trails, all of those things. And, and that's, when we were looking at people's comments, coming up with the alternatives, connected, that was the intent, that we're really going to try to do all those things in each of those different areas that we're talking about. So, something to consider.
I do connect it.
Yeah.
I really do that connected part.
Yeah, and I think there's some question about what we leave in and what we leave out, and if we leave out something, it can give us a little bit more flexibility, but if we leave in something into a vision statement, I think it then winds up becoming part of the core of what we are. And if the core of what we are is like, you know, we're a walkable place, like, what do you think of when you think of Mount Lake Terrace? Oh, it's that place you walk around. Like, you know, maybe that's a thing. But I think connectivity kind of gets to the heart of it a bit more, and then, like, the, the function of how that happens, like, you know, obviously, no one can like, just connect in all the cars all the time, we'd be. We'd be full of parking lots, and we couldn't meet any of these other things. But I feel like there was something else, somebody said that, oh, you were talking about central areas and the ambiguity of whether it was central, one central area or multiple central areas. Am I understanding that correctly?
It's roughly the gist. I think the more common term, like, people would recognize would probably be neighborhoods. I mean, obviously, you know, our technical terms that we use, you know, are subareas or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
They're not, they're not going to, they're not going to get that. I mean, the idea is to use, you know, terminology that, this pie chart here, there'll be less of the somewhat because they'll have a better understanding of what, you know, the statement's intent is. To kind of circle back around, you know, to talking about connectivity versus walkability. That's where I kind of had an eyebrow raised, you know, when it was walkable, because I'm like, well, I've lived here my whole life. It's not walkable.
Aspirational, though.
It's like, we're aspirational, but, you know, to be walkable, you have to have someplace that you want to walk to. And that, once you get there, it is easy to walk to, or it's easy to walk around. We don't have that yet. That is a goal.
Right.
But we are still a car-dominated suburban sprawl community. Connected in a way multimodally, thinking, yeah, cars. Technically, we have a road network and sidewalks and buses. But we have two major things that split our city into thirds. We have, you know, a large geographic feature that, you know, like a ravine that kind of impedes growth from east to west. And we have the I-5 cutting right through us that splits us, you know, east to west as well. So it's, in the future, I want that all to be connected somehow. Right now, unfortunately, it's not.
Yeah, and the connection is important.
Yeah.
Then I think you also said, you know, a place to walk around and stuff. And when I was, you know, thinking, when I was seeing thriving commercial areas, in my mind, like, I don't know, maybe, I feel like what we're talking about here, and if y'all have different visions, let me know. But it sounds like we're kind of striving towards, you know, making sort of the heart of different neighborhoods. Like, you know, whether that's commercial, whether that's a central place, maybe it's commercial. Like, ideally, they, you know, in order to build walkability, you sort of need to put things next to people. And so you wind up with that architecture of the city anyways. But I think, you know, the thriving commercial neighborhoods, I think, is already kind of replicated in the bright economy. But I think what the thriving commercial areas wants to be here, what I think it's getting at, is that it's really more of like, like a town center. Like, it's kind of a central place, like a heart of a community. Because we already say bright economy, and I feel like thriving commercial areas is kind of a bright economy. I don't know. Do you, what do you think?
I mean, I know for me, when I think of thriving commercial areas, I don't think of just the town center. You know, part of our, part of our work plan with this is, you know, all the subarea updates. And for the majority of our subareas has a commercial core to it. Some better than others. Hopefully, the goal is, is that we can improve all of it. So I think thriving commercial areas, you know, can apply, you know, almost applies hand in hand to the varied of the neighborhoods, because you want to have that, you know, diversity of building and activity type of the neighborhoods. So to me, that, that kind of goes hand in hand and makes, you know, makes sense the way that terminology is kind of presented. I don't, you know, I don't know if other people feel that way, or maybe it's, we're missing something.
I think maybe, I'm getting a little lost, is in each vision statement, we're talking about commercial, and we're talking about neighborhoods. And then there's also like the statement, like the bright economy. But like, are our commercial areas part of our neighborhoods?
In some cases, they are. I think you got to be careful, thinking long-term, that not every neighborhood's built the same, right?
Yeah.
So I think that's where you get varied neighborhoods, is because you're really trying to plan around kind of what we've talked about, where, I'm going to use the word node, Mandy, but, you know, where we're, we're talking about where it is appropriate to put commercial. Doesn't mean that commercial's everywhere, but there's some appropriate areas to expand those neighborhood commercial opportunities, right? I think why there's been a focus on town center is because in planning, you really are trying to build, there's a term called, there's no there there. You don't have a central there, that place, which community kind of evolves around a downtown. And so a core that's built out of a strong commercial center with, you know, services like the post office and city hall and those other things is really important to a community, just like it's important here. And that's why there's been a focus on, it's important to have a town center, but it's also important to look at other areas of the community and provide areas where people can shop or get other services. And where are those appropriate areas? And I think you guys have already kind of identified some of those areas with, hey, where is transit? Where are our collector streets and arterials and other things that lend easy access, right? So we're trying to build on, what do we have, and then expand on that for people to get there. I hope that helps.
Yeah, I think thinking of it in that way, I'm actually starting to lean towards a little bit towards the structure of B, where we're saying community that values, right? And then we talk about our neighborhoods first with access to. And then we bring in the parks, the commercial centers, diverse housing choices. And so it's talking more about like, human-centered first, and then thinking about the access that all these wonderful neighborhoods have the access to these different things.
Yeah. And I think my hangup for the word commercial, which happens in both A and B, is that it sort of implies that commerce happens there. Like, it's just a place where buying and selling. But I think our goals for these is to get like more, you know, it's not just a place where you go, you know, pick up some things from a store. It's also a place where you meet people. It's a place where, you know, stuff sort of happens in a central, in a central way that serves the city. And so I feel like I started thinking, oh, this aligns with what you said. And now I'm taking it in this other direction, so I apologize. But I agree, I think the structure of B, where it starts with the community and then kind of starts talking about the structure of the town, makes sense to me, especially as a planning document, where it's kind of about the architecture of how the city is formed kind of on a scale of zoning and streets. But.
So maybe commercial becomes activity nodes or another word maybe for commercial?
Activity areas.
Say it again?
Activity areas. What do you think of that word?
That's the parks and recreation. I mean, we're addressing both by saying commercial and then parks and recreation, and defining them as they would be zoned and as we would approach them. Sorry, that's my engineer brain, so I didn't see this all.
That's okay.
My planning brain automatically recognizes activity area as being more encompassing. But I could see if you're, if you're.
That talk about it, yeah.
A parks enthusiast, you would think your mind would go, you know.
Absolutely.
And like, honestly.
Both in the same area.
Yeah, and honestly, parks and commerce are like, they're like peanut butter and chocolate. Like, you put a cafe next to a park, it makes both better.
Or peanut butter and honey.
So do you guys have your planning the thors out?
I know, exactly. That's what I was doing.
Can I work, Smith?
Thriving activity hubs.
I like that because it's.
Town center and.
It's kind of all encompassing, and it allows the reader to interpret it how they will, hopefully positively.
Yeah.
Well, every, like, we all might think of something different with activity hub. Whatever it is, it's still positive. And I think that's a benefit, and that's something that, you know, we want to hype up in the community, even though behind the scenes, we might be thinking of different things. It kind of is more maybe all encompassing.
So should it be a vibrant town center and activity hubs?
Yeah, and maybe town center is just an activity hub, a more intense activity hub. If we want to still mention town center, I don't have a strong opinion either way. But I think the idea that, you know, especially with this comp plan update, we're not just looking at town center as like the place where the entire life of the town happens. It's like the life of the town is happening throughout the town.
Sure.
I think that's, I think that's worthwhile to mention.
I guess I would put it to you this way, town center is not the end-all, be-all, but it's a very important part of how we redevelop this community. If you take a look at any other suburban kind of community that's developed, like, we have, you know, I understand at one time, we had a community, and then we had a little public works project go right through the middle of it and other things that, you know, really impacted it as a small town, became more of one of the many kind of suburban sprawl communities. And so you're trying to rebuild back a, a community. Yes, you're surrounded by other things, but what makes a community, you know, a kind of whole? And part of that is a center, a core. Doesn't take away that you want every other place in the community to be good too or better, right? And serve people in those neighborhoods. But, you know, think of Edmonds. Think of other areas, other little communities that you like to go, what do you like about them? And I think you'll say, oh, I like, this is a big part of why I like that place. Activity hubs or gathering places, that's another, another one. Gathering places.
Oh, gathering, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I like that. Gathering places, community hubs, and things like that. I think I agree with you, like, the ambiguity gives us flexibility in this case, and other things can be determined in, you know, whatever, like, you know, 100 years from now, if we're looking at comp plan updates, hopefully, the vision statement will still be similar, regardless of like, you know, if we're all teleporting or something. But, you know.
Or maybe it's not. And that's okay. Maybe the communities already gotten to a certain point, and now it's to get it to another point. So I don't necessarily, you know, we're trying to say, hey, what do we want to be when we grow up? In 20 years, what would we hope for us living in this community and for our kids or our grandkids living in this community? What would we like this to be and offer them? That this is someplace that they potentially want to live and stay? What is, what does that look like? And that's what this is. What does that look like to you?
Is the, is this vision statement intended to be our vision of the community in 2024? Or do we want this to be representative?
2044.
Sorry, 2044.
Yeah.
Or do we want this to be representative of the work we need to do to get to that point? That makes sense. So I feel like there's different ways to craft it of, what is our dream of that point, or what is the work we need to do?
This is the dream, this is the aspiration. The work is, the goals and the policies and the other parts of the plan, which set the framework for the rules and development codes and other things to get us there. So this is, in 20 years, this is really what we aspire, to have this community be like, you know, a welcoming community, safe and connected neighborhoods, you know, all those things that we're trying to envision that we think would make the community better than it is today. What does that look like to you? I think the people, that almost 300 residents shared with you a lot of those thoughts. And I think a lot of those thoughts are in here, or at least we intended to put those thoughts in here. So that's kind of how these were crafted. The first one was really trying to, you know, make a little bit smaller. Alternative A, what was already the vision statement, and make it more concise. And B and C were an effort to take a look at what the community had to say when they took the survey.
And I think hopefully, we are already a little bit some of this already, because it'll make our job easier. If we were, if our vision statement were, I want to be the most rockin' roller coaster that takes up four square miles in the world, we'd have our work cut out for us. But, you know, hopefully, we are at least a little bit this so that we can grow naturally instead of having to do a lot of hard work. If we did go with alternative B, I'm curious how things like diverse housing opportunities, which is like a thing rather than a community thing, like homes for a community that is welcoming and inclusive or something. I guess that's just one question I have is, it sounds like, I think there's compelling arguments for the structure of alternative B, but maybe alternative A just kind of had less work to do? I'm not sure what you all think on that. Do we have direction?
I was just going to weigh in that I really liked the suggestion of, if you go with B, to say a welcoming and inclusive community, because I think those two things together bring even more than what equitable says. You know, and I think a lot of people kind of struggle with, what does equitable mean? But welcoming and inclusive, that's very clear, you know, yeah.
Agreed.
I think inclusive too can span housing and, and other aspirations in your alternative. So if you're inclusive and you have diverse housing opportunities, then by its nature, things that you're doing are inclusive, right?
Right. Other than the word parks, which I'm cool with, I think the more loosely structured we are, the more flexibility it gives us to explain what those things mean. And what I, one thing I'd like to see is sort of vision statements for other areas of the subarea plan. Like, what is, what is a home and what does it do? You know, what is capital improvements for, all these things. I think it will be helpful for something like a vision statement, or for something like a comprehensive plan, it's helpful to have sort of a vision for each thing. So we can, you know, if there are some things in this vision statement that need to be carved out in other sections of the comp plan, I think it could be worthwhile to do that, too.
So are you leaning towards B now with changes to some of the wording? Is that what we're hearing?
I like the structure of B, the wording of A, and the, well, especially the length of A. Is that kind of what everyone's feeling?
I think some of the, some of the just key terms that we made to A, I think, might cover a lot of our stuff. You know, and try and keep it a little shorter and punchier. I know we haven't kind of fully fleshed it out yet, but let me just kind of read what I've written so far, you know, hearing feedback from everyone here. Sort of edits to A, it would say, Mount Lake Terrace is a welcoming, inclusive community of thriving activity hubs, safe and varied neighborhoods, a bright, that word can change, economy and an expansive network of parks and recreation opportunities that celebrate and supports diversity, arts, and culture. And I think the only word I might be missing is connectivity.
Yeah.
That was brought up.
Yeah, I think when we, my memory of this is that we started saying safe and connected neighborhoods, but I feel like varied may have been important as well. And I think if we were to get closer to the structure of B, we would put the neighborhoods before commercial areas or central nodes or central activity hubs. Like, it's, our neighborhoods are the basic structure. And then, I mean, it's a bit nitpicky, but the order may be important.
I think I've heard a number of comments about the housing element in the statement. What do we think about, or maybe replacing a bright economy with something about either diverse housing opportunities or housing choices available for all? Because Commissioner Batra did mention that, that kind of, the bright economy kind of covers the, well, what was, commercial areas, if we change it to activity nodes, maybe that's a. If we change it to activity nodes, maybe that's a different story, but just a thought.
Could we include businesses, homes for businesses in those homes? That might cover both of them. Like it, you know, like if you're a person or a business, you have like, you know, a home here, like a wide range of things. Or is that more of, you want to reference the housing element directly? Do you think it's important to do that?
I, I was just commenting that a number of folks mentioned that they liked the wording in B and C around diverse housing opportunities or housing choices available to all incomes. And that isn't really addressed in A, so it's like, to help keep it succinct, what if we replaced a bright economy with something about housing instead?
So I have been playing with chat GPT over here, copying everything into one and asked for something that was succinct. And there's a pretty good one that I think combines some of this. Mount Lake Terrace envisions, and we can change some of that, a vibrant, inclusive community where diversity, economic vitality and safety converge into thriving neighborhoods and commercial areas. Emphasizing equitable access to housing, parks and recreation. Our city champions arts, culture and sustainable growth.
What prompt?
Adding some stuff in there, but.
What, what, what prompt did you use to write that?
I, what's that?
What prompts did you use to write that?
I asked it to come, so I copied the text from the slides and asked it to come up with a good succinct combination of all three of these. It sounds like we're, we're, we all enjoy all three.
Yes.
And so.
AI is doing our job.
So I did, was kind of thinking, you know, your point that you just made, you know, kind of combining, you know, maybe instead of, you know, having a, you know, an econ- economy element be by itself and sort of housing element be by itself. We both, you know, we want, we kind of want to merge both of those terms somehow, um, without adding too many additional words. So maybe a way to combine at least those two segments is to say with a diverse how, with diverse housing and commercial opportunities.
Yeah.
Is that what your thing said?
Hmm. That is pretty close. My brain wants to say, my brain wants to find alternative words for housing and commerce because those are things, but I don't think it's that important. Like, you know, I think it's fine. I'm telling my brain, no.
So Chair Batista, what would your new alternative A look like?
Oh, hold on, let me, let me. Okay. Let me cross this out, draw a little arrow. Hopefully when I get two sentences in, I won't get lost with all my notes. Okay, so new update, uh, kind of wordsmithing alternative A would be, Mount Lake Terrace is a welcoming, inclusive community of thriving activity hubs, safe and varied neighborhoods with diverse housing and commercial opportunities and an expansive network, um, of parks and recreation. It's opportunities twice, so maybe we won't want to eliminate one of those. Um, that celebrates and supports diversity, arts and culture. And then maybe instead of saying expansive, we could put connected there instead. So it'd be a connected network of parks and recreation opportunities. Of course, then that might.
I think, I think the neighborhoods are connected. I would also like to see the parks connected for the record.
You think if your neighborhoods are connected, your parks are connected?
Hopefully.
That is, that is definitely a goal we're striving for. That is definitely not something I would, I would say we are at right now.
This is vision statement, 20 years. What, what, what do you, what do you want to look, what, what do you want it to look like when you have gray hair?
Yeah.
And you're walking around those connected trails.
Yes.
Yep.
So I think, um, I understand why my, I kind of want to reject words like housing and commerce. I think they can be simplified. So instead of housing, where we say housing, we say homes. And where we say commerce, we say businesses.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't say commerce, I just said commercial.
Oh, commercial, yeah. So, yeah, they, I mean, housing kind of sounds a little jargony to me and commercial sounds also a little bit jargony like.
But if we're providing housing for different folks, then in my mind, it's more than a home. Maybe it's a transitional place that somebody's staying. So I think we're, we're tasked with providing something more than somebody's house or somebody's home. We're tasked with providing all different types of alternatives in housing.
But transitional housing is just a step to a home, right? Or then your home is in the community somewhere, but then it's just not a specific place at the moment.
I mean, it's up to you guys. I'm just.
Yeah.
Saying what we're charged.
Just my own bias, I kind of think housing is kind of a technical product and people kind of relate more to home, but it's, you know, it's, it's not, it's a small point.
I get it though, because the home doesn't have to be a house.
Right.
So, yeah, I like, I can hear, I hear you with home.
Yeah.
With that.
Like the community is a home. It's like a bigger scale of home.
Yeah.
Did we want to say, uh, safe, connected and varied neighborhoods?
Oh, yeah, connected needs to go in there somewhere.
I really like connected.
I think that would be the most logical place to.
Hmm.
To, to put it.
Yeah. What is connected is at the top, it's the community.
Safe, varied and connected. I'm running out of space on my paper here. So kind of, kind of getting back to, if we're, if we're talking about, you know, does, I guess, the, I mean, I have plenty of paper, I just trying to keep it all.
I know.
All close to each other instead of notes three pages later. Um, the, you know, kind of the point of, you know, should it be stating, you know, diverse housing, commercial opportunities? Or do we want to say diverse homes and economic opportunities or? I, I guess every, everybody kind of has a different interpretation or different feelings about different words, so.
Yeah.
It's, it's.
I feel like.
I mean, I, I'm trying, I'm trying to give the average reader some credit to this, you know, you know, somebody who doesn't, you know, into their eyeballs up to here.
Yeah.
Dealing with these terms, uh, all day, every day. Um, you know, but I, I, I think the public would understand what we're getting at with, with housing and.
Yeah.
Commercial opportunities, but.
Yeah, I think it's a small, I think it's a small point. I mean.
Yeah.
Can workshop it in the community if we wanted to, or, you know, when, when we get feedback, like they might have other words they prefer. But I think we're, we're saying the same thing, like we want diversity of this, it's just.
I would say, you know, maybe just saying instead of commercial, economic opportunities might be considered a little bit more inclusive.
Yeah. Or homes and businesses.
Yeah.
I like this term, economic vitality, because again, that's going back to like, that's kind of the vibrant economy, the different, you know, aspects of the commercial business that we want to encourage. Just a thought.
I like it.
That'd be diverse housing and E, and economic vitality? Or would that be somewhere else in the statement?
How do other people feel about that? Vitality over opportunities?
Maybe vital businesses. Sorry, I keep coming back to the word businesses. We used vital economy or biz, what, what did we use other than businesses? Cause now I've got it stuck in my head.
Well, I kind of like this, this actually converges all that into thriving neighborhoods. So it's combining housing, economic vitality. Also it's saying diversity, economic vitality and safety converge in thriving neighborhoods and commercial areas. That is kind of, I mean, obviously we could wordsmith that more than, you know, the robot can, but.
I'm not letting chat P, GPT take credit for this.
No, no, it's a creative tool, it's a creative process. What was this on, this question on me? I, I, I just like the term economic vitality. I feel like it kind of eliminates some of the other word, words that are included here. And you can kind of succinctly get down to, you know, the thriving commercial areas and bright economy are kind of pulled into that term.
Yeah, though we changed that to central areas though, right? Or central hubs or activity nodes or something? Like we didn't specific, did we specifically reference commercial areas? Or did we change that to something else? Sorry, I.
We need a white.
We, we've done a few different things, so. Yeah. Oh, I, I like the whiteboard idea.
I don't know, I feel like I've talked a little bit. How do other people feel?
I feel our message might have gotten across to the wordsmithing people who could probably come back to us with some options based on our discussions, maybe?
I like that idea. I don't think we need to solve it tonight.
Yeah.
But we're pretty close.
We're close, I think we're close.
So, um, what I'll propose is we can bring back two statements.
Hmm.
For you, that sort of touches on each one and what was stated, um, through this conversation. And then at the next February 26 meeting, we can come up with a preferred alternative that we can go forward with.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
All right.
And we'll definitely get it done.
Then, um, are we still, um, want something on environmental stewardship reflected in these statements?
Yeah, if we can work that in.
All right.
I thought it was the only one that liked that one.
All right, so, um, if we're done there.
I, I would just add, I, I don't know what kind of resources we have available, but maybe just in case, if there is some sort of whiteboard on wheels or something that you can roll into here.
Sure, sure.
That might help. I mean, hopefully it doesn't get to that point, but you know.
Yeah, well, maybe I can do some live annotating at the next meeting. Um, that'll probably help with this.
As long as we can see the screen that is up here on.
Um, and just for reference, um, I did plot these into Hemingway editor, which.
Oh, yeah.
Sort of, so all of these, I think except for B is at an eighth grade level. Um, B might be at a ninth grade level, so.
Okay. I think that's a good grade to target.
Yeah. All right. I'll pass it on to Sierra, who's going to discuss updates to the growth alternatives.
Thank you, Jonathan. Um, so next on our agenda tonight is revisiting of the, uh, growth alternative framework, uh, discussion. We had gone through sort of the three different alternatives at our last get together. And we'll be coming back tonight with an update, um, on what those look like based on feedback that we heard from CPAG as well as this body. Um, we presented these growth target alternatives to CPAG last Wednesday and we did receive support that, um, these alternatives do better reflect the feedback um, that's been given. Um, what you will notice is that, um, these alternatives do better reflect, um, the bus network. So some of those conceptual blobs that you saw in our last maps will look a little more, um, be a little more reflective of, you know, where do we expect to see frequent transit, um, in the future as we look at building out a, a network of connected neighborhoods across the city? Um, so just coming back to, you know, what is a growth alternative? Um, we will, the, the purpose behind these growth alternatives is to give the city and the planning team the ability to, um, review three different, uh, potential futures for the city as part of the environmental impact statement. Um, not, none of these alternatives, um, are specifically the path forward for the city, but this is what will be studied, um, as part of this process, um, to, uh, evaluate what the potential impacts of growth are and to get feedback from the public as part of the, the public comment process further on in the process. So, um, again, our goal is to align this with the feedback we've heard from both the advisory group as well as the planning commission, um, provide a range of alternatives. Um, and again, those, those three distinct different futures, um, to study for the future. Um, so to recap, the status or the, the definition of these three alternatives has not changed in any, um, I think in any way. What's really changed, um, that we'll be showing you tonight is the conceptual maps that go along with those. So the intent of that first alternative is to give us a baseline to study. This is our, um, what would be called a no action scenario. But, um, for the purposes of this comp plan update, since the city does need to update their, uh, residential zoning, um, to include middle housing and ADUs, um, we'll be studying, um, a slight change, um, to sort of what the capacity will be like, um, in the residential areas. But this, uh, status quo alternative, um, will not, uh, give the city sort of that, the growth that it would need to meet the growth, the growth targets that have been passed down by the county. Um, our alternative two would be, uh, targeted, uh, land use changes that would allow, uh, the city to provide, um, enough housing and jobs within the city to meet the allocated growth target, looking at some targeted places around the city as well as the existing and future bus lines. And then that longer range alternative is that, you know, 20 years, 40 years out, sort of as you look at it, at an idealized or maybe just a really visionary future for the city, what are all the changes that could go into, um, accommodating and exceeding those growth targets through 2044? So this map, um, has not changed significantly. What we're showing you now is, um, how the city and its zoning lines up with the existing and future bus routes. Um, we've also taken a look at the future bus routes, um, from the planning done by both King County Metro and from community transit with how those bus lines will change when the link light rail opens, um, to Linwood. So, um, there are some existing buses that'll go away and new bus routes that you'll see come online later this year. We wanted to make sure that our planning does reflect that future transportation planning done by our regional agencies. So, alternative two, this is where you're going to see the most change. Um, so we have sort of, the goal behind this one is to provide, um, additional transitional zoning, um, allowing, um, townhomes or other middle housing along the frequent bus routes within the city. So, um, farther up 56th, along 44th, along 66th on the other side of the freeway here. So creating these spines of higher density transitional housing, um, along those, uh, major transit networks. And then emphasizing, um, a higher density of development around some, um, selected nodes, which would include, um, the north part of the city, um, along 212th. Um, also taking into account the fact that this is one of those places in the city that does have, um, we want to be, we want to be accommodating of the existing, um, uh, affordable, natural, for affordable, naturally occurring affordable housing that exists in this part of the city. So, um, any, uh, you know, land use changes appear would take into account, um, anti-displacement measures or other strategies that be studied as part of the plan. Um, also looking at the Melody Hill area, um, around the intersection with I-5 and, uh, 220th, looking at, uh, what would it look like to have, um, higher density development on both sides of the freeway interchange? Um, additionally, taking a look at the area in and around, uh, the Cedar Plaza Shopping Center. Um, and then also on the south border of the city, um, against shoreline, um, looking at additional high density development on this part of the city.
Thank you. Our janitor keeps on turning on our, um, alarm system, unfortunately. This is the second meeting that's happened. Saying about a loud, wah, wah, wah goes off and the cops come over, so.
Yes, they're just right there, right? Um, yeah, so then that, that in the south part of the city, um, as we, uh, sort of border shoreline where we do know that, um, you know, multifamily housing is allowed in that Ballenger Village area, sort of creating, um, or, uh, allowing for hired and city housing on the Mount Lake Terrace site to accompany that. Um, this is also increasing, um, the, uh, level of transitional zoning, um, in and around, um, at areas with access to the existing light rail station. Um, I'm going to move on to alternative three here and we will, um, circle back on questions as well. So on our longer range alternative. So on our longer-range alternative, we are still reflecting those future bus lines, but there's more of an emphasis here on creating new commercial nodes. You'll see those sort of dark blue dots. Those would be new, smaller neighborhood commercial areas around the city. These were chosen sort of based on looking at existing development, looking at the geography of the area, and sort of creating more of a spacing-out access to commercial amenities around the city. You'll also notice that this alternative does have a higher-density multifamily allowed in and around sort of that quarter-mile and half-mile radius of the light rail station. And we're also, would be analyzing a wider sort of buffer of transitional housing around the, around the different bus lines. So instead of going a block in, maybe we go two blocks in and around those high, those local bus routes. There's also additional room to study middle housing, such as fourplexes, in and around the older neighborhoods around Town Center to allow, you know, up to fourplexes in some of those older single-family neighborhoods that have the best connectivity into the Town Center. So really what we're looking for from this body tonight is, you know, are we aligning better sort of with the comments heard? And we want to make sure that if there's anything else that we may have missed, we're getting that accommodated. But really, the goal here is to get a recommendation from this body that we're good to move forward with bringing these to City Council and starting our analysis process, where we will get much more into the details on exactly what kind of growth sort of these conceptual maps will mean. And there will be additional opportunities to comment later, but.
And I might, I might just add too, that when we do that analysis of these alternatives, we'll be getting more specific with the numbers of housing units that we might expect related to each. And we'll also be able to get more specific with the actual boundary lines that we're showing for land use and ultimately for zoning, you know, to follow parcel lines, because that's really the best way to do it. Rather than to have an oval, you know, it'll morph into a parcel line boundary. So I say that just because we don't want to get too hung up on those boundaries or what's in and out at this point, because we'll be studying that more.
So I had a, kind of a quick question, you know, just kind of bouncing between the maps themselves. We have some circles and ellipses, you know, around some of the areas in alternative two and alternative three that kind of cover areas where you see maybe projected growth in the future, you know, with, you know, kind of a strong commercial node that's probably going to be booked in by, you know, mixed-use and higher-density of residential. But I'm noticing that the circle, or I guess in this case, an ellipsis would maybe be more appropriate, up on 212th itself. Because that is, a lot of parts of 212th is either ripe for redevelopment, you know, especially when the light rail comes online, given it's 212th and 52nd, given its proximity to the inner urban trail, and then 212th and 44th, given its proximity to, you know, the main RT rail there and Linwood and Light Rail. But we already have a, you know, a commercial node there at 212th and 44th, like we do for Cedar Plaza, 228th and 44th. I'm just kind of curious why we don't have a circle or ellipses around there for even more targeted growth of, you know, the commercial node and residential? I know the color shows that it's dense, but I'm just curious if not having the circle there.
So, so I would interpret that two ways. Is that the reason why that area is a specific shape and not a circle is not a distinction between what kind of growth is, would be studied there. It has everything to do with, we followed the existing multifamily zoning boundaries on the area along 212th versus the other sort of more circular nodes are taking. They're a little fuzzier right now because they are accommodating more existing single-family areas. And we haven't gone through our study process to determine sort of where those boundaries could be. So we're talking about existing land use boundaries versus places where we might need to determine a new sort of land use boundary. But, but that purple on both alternative two and alternative three would be, the purple, I think, and this is as we put together these maps, the purple is recognizing that these are places with existing commercial spaces, at least somewhere within that area that we want to emphasize. And the blue here is recognizing places that aren't existing commercial hubs right now, that are part of, you know, residential areas that are, you know, along major materials with access to transit that could have commercial allowed in the future. So I do think that the intent along 212th is to study a higher-density commercial development, but we want to take extra care up there, because we have heard from, as we've presented this to Planning Commission and to our CPAG group, that that's an area of the city where we want to be very aware of the existing multifamily housing and what that means for affordable housing within the city of Mountain Lake Terrace. There might be additional strategies that go into sort of what kind of growth is allowed in that part of the city. We also recognize that there is a mobile home park up there as well as in the south part of the city, where we've heard feedback on how to ideal and accommodate with the mobile home parks as well, so.
I know, you know, just for me, you know, there's a lot of things happening, kind of, you know, in that upper quadrant, but kind of take them, you know, I kind of had a discussion about the mobile home park at the previous meeting, so kind of set that aside for now and just focus, you know, primarily what's happening on 212th. You know, we have several large garden-style apartment complexes, some of which, you know, will, within the timeframe of this comp plan vision, you know, might be hitting its end-of-life cycle in terms of usefulness. I know that, you know, over the years, updates have been made, you know, paint jobs, siding changes, you know, but there's only so much you can do before it's just, it's going to end its useful life. And I would argue that right now, though, most people wouldn't consider those complexes as, in the affordable housing conversation anyway. It's probably closer to, you know, market rate, given the location. You know, we're not talking like downtown Seattle rates, but definitely not affordable housing either. So while there is, you know, the concept of affordable housing definitely is more identifiable with like the mobile home park, I'm not sure, in reality now with rising rent rates, if you could say the, you know, the complexes like Northern Lights or, I still call it Bronson Place, I don't know, they always change their names. The one directly to the, you know, directly to the west.
Super Oaks?
That's two blocks over, but you could, you can include that in, you know, into that conversation as well. It's just as, it's sort of, the further west you go, it becomes more of a mix between apartments, condos, and, you know, kind of houses kind of sprinkled throughout until you get to 52nd. So it's a weird mix going on there, but I, I don't know if I've ever heard anybody refer to it as affordable housing. But maybe that's relative, you know, affordable compared to higher rents in.
Yeah, it's, it's just, you know, how we've talked about range of income levels. It's fitting into one of those that's in demand, you know, and good to have in your community. So, you know, we don't want to necessarily displace that prematurely. And I get what you're saying about reaching life cycle, you know, definitely, but, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, the, you know, the goal would be, anything that would replace would not only increase the number of units, but also increase
Yes.
the diversity of type of units to provide those things that we hear from, you know, people. It's like, you know, who can't even afford a one-bedroom or versus the family of five who can't afford a house but are looking for, you know, an apartment and, you know, those garden-style apartments don't, you know, aren't usually like three, usually they're one or two bedrooms or not, occasionally a three, but, you know.
All right. So I think, well, I think based on sort of the maps that we have, it sounds like if we do, we are acknowledging that we will be studying higher-density development in that, in all of that area. So it sounds like that's in alignment with the feedback that you're giving us here tonight.
And then in terms of, you know, always thinking ahead too, you know, we're talking, you know, we're looking at the whole city here, but we're also, as part of this process, at the same time, thinking about two subareas. And I know for one, there's been discussion about, you know, it doesn't make sense to keep that one subarea as big as it is, you know, is there a natural divide in that? Will that be something that you guys will be looking at, sort of, kind of in your analysis? You know, where it's like, okay, like to give an idea, you know, example, go back to the 212th. You know, we've got, we've got a node with potential growth at 212th and 44th. We've got a smaller node, but a lot of vacant land with potential growth at 52nd and 212th. You know, somewhere in between, would it make sense to sort of, there be a dividing line to sort of split those subareas up?
So we will be getting into the subarea question separately from those growth target conversations as we move through this evening. I think looking at sort of what is the goal to be accomplished during the subarea planning process, we really, I think the goal is to focus on not so much the boundaries, but more of the communities in these areas, what do they need, what kind of connections? Sort of the boundary conversation, if that's something that this body determines needs to be studied further, could be a separate process that comes out as an implementation item from the comp plan to be, you know, part of a broader community engagement effort to talk about, you know, where are those nodes within the, you know, where are those, do those boundaries need to go within the community?
So I guess that kind of gets back to the, you know, sort of the order of operations here then. You know, we're doing our, we're doing sort of this, this general overview comp plan stuff. So will, is it going to be that this process will be completed before the subarea work then? Or is it happening at the same time?
The subarea, there is subarea work that is happening as part of this overall work. The recommendations that come out of a more focused look at the Cascade View and Melody Hill area will be incorporated into the comprehensive plan. But there could be, just as we know that we need to study further other areas in their city, there could be an outcome that says that, hey, there does need to be maybe more of a focus on identifying what are those, maybe there is a different approach to how subareas are determined in the city. And maybe it's looking more at nodes and the walkable areas around them. But that would be something that needs to be determined as part of, not, not this process, but another one. Kristi, am I getting that right?
Yeah, I would say the thing about redoing boundaries is if you take a look at every, every subarea, they're all large. And so you can't really do one without taking a look at the others. And so I think if we're going to talk further about breaking down subareas, then I think we need to look at that as a whole around the community. And if that's something where you want to break those further down into neighborhoods, then in my mind, that's a community conversation as well. Just not where we think neighborhoods are end and start or boundaries, but what are the people that live there? Where do they think the subarea is or the neighborhood is? And so I think that's a bigger discussion. If you, if you take a look, can you flip a couple of slides? Case in point, here's the subareas we have right now. So you can, you can tell all of them are equally large. So I think you can make potentially the same argument for all subareas of, do you really need to look at the boundaries of all subareas? And in this case, where, you know, we added two subareas just to get that subarea work started, where we're drilling down a little bit more in Melody Hill and Cascade View. But I think if it's the desire of the Planning Commission of taking a look at the subarea boundaries, then we need to take a look at all the subarea boundaries.
Yeah, and I, I think it wa, you know, going back years now that we've been talking about this, I think that was the intention. I guess the assumption was is that we would handle the boundary issues for each subarea as we got to that subarea, if we weren't going to be doing it all at the same time.
So then if you divided subareas into a different subarea when you were studying a subarea, how do you handle the other subarea?
Yeah. Well, I mean, still, that's, that's what I thought, it's like.
That sounded ridiculous, and I'm sorry, but, yeah.
View, you know, study, we'll just, we'll just say Cascade View. So, I mean, you could interchange this with Melody Hill.
Sure.
You're diving deep into the numbers. And so certain things are going to appear with that data. Certain, you know, certain, you know, existing realities, potential outcomes, potential futures. I, I think part of it is, is that I don't know how many people in the city, I, you know, right now identify themselves as, oh, I live in Cascade View or, you know, Melody Hill's a little bit different. Melody Hill, very strong neighborhood identity. It's been called Melody Hill forever. So that aside, Town Center, it's a fairly new name. Cascade View, it's a fairly new name that hopefully it'll be changed very soon. Cedar Terrace. Cedar Way, Cedar Way, Cedar Way Elementary, Cedar Plaza, that, you know, that has, you know, a little bit more identity there. Gateway, that's, that's fairly new terminology. Lake Ballenger, if you've been around long enough, you know, Ballenger used to be, people would consider Ballenger, you know, on the other side of the county line as part of Terrace, even though it was always unincorporated until Shoreline grabbed it. And so then it'd be kind of, came awkward, it's like, okay, so it's Ballenger, Lake Ballenger. Anyway, the point I'm getting to is, maybe not until very recently, you know, maybe with the prevalence of social media or, I, I wouldn't say the average person even identifies themselves as living in a specific neighborhood. What I'd like to see is, you know, the, the way the city identifies the neighborhoods is a good caveat that like Seattle uses. The neighborhood boundaries are administrative boundaries. They aren't necessarily proclaiming that any, any neighbor, you know, any specific neighborhood stops and starts. It's just a tool that the city uses for administrative purposes. Neighborhood identity, you know, is, you know, can be completely different than what the city says. Oh, yeah, for, you know, if you're west of this street, yeah, that's a different district. So so-and-so handles that, your questions, and the other side of the street, that's going to be, that's going to be somebody else. I think with, with breaking up, you know, kind of these oversized subareas, at least administratively, it, it would also become easier to have them be more balanced. And maybe at some point, you know, the, you know, in terms of neighborhood identity, be a little bit easier for, you know, the residents to, you know, to really connect with that sort of geographic place. Whereas as kind of now, it's just, it's kind of big. And, you know, a lot of these, you know, a lot of the terms that we're throwing around with these are fairly new and aren't, and aren't that historic with the city, except save for, you know, two. Sorry, I probably, probably lost you guys a little bit there with my ramble.
Yeah, I think what I'm taking away is really that the construct of these subareas is really about planning for them and identifying what's needed in those areas, you know, as, as a boundary to work with, just like you said. It's not about identity, you know, and, and that's something that probably needs to be worked on in the future as those areas maybe get broken up into neighborhood plans, you know. So a lot of communities that we're working with are thinking about doing neighborhood planning in the future to really bring more identity and sense of place to the individual neighborhoods. So that might be. and sense of place to the individual neighborhoods. So that might be kind of a, a thing to work towards and that the conference of plan could point, point you all to, you know, as this goal or policy to do more neighborhood planning, bring more neighborhood identity to bear. So, yeah. Anyway, we have, should we move on with sub areas or?
Well, I guess, do we have?
I have several other questions. Sorry. Um, and I don't know if anyone else does. Can we move back to vision plan two or alternative two? Cool. Um, so can you tell me a bit about the bus network that you looked at as? Cause that's like the sort of origination of what you've got for here, right? Can you tell me a bit about what's going on there? Um, and what sort of, this is, uh, the stuff that's happening after the 2024 changeover. Um, can you tell me about your assumptions for that? Like what routes? Um, it looks like you've got maybe some routes in King County that don't have buses stops identified yet. Can you tell me a bit about those?
Yes. So there is a, so I'll go over with sort of what's staying consistent and I'll go over some of the future changes. So as we kind of start with the Mount Lake Terrace Transit Center, um, you will have one bus line that will run across, um, two 36th, um, over to, um, down into the ravine and to 44th, and then up 44th to the Linwood Transit Center. And that is an existing bus route and will be a future bus route and as part of Community Transit's long range plan to have frequent all day access. So buses that are coming every 10 to 15 minutes, um, on weekdays and then, um, up to 30 minutes, um, uh, head times on, um, non, you know, you know, weekends and Sundays and evenings.
And that's a Vanry up to two 36th and then 56th up to two 36th?
Um, so that'll go, that's going from the Linwood, that's going from the, um, basically it's making a big L. So you're kind of going, sorry, over to, um, uh, 44th from, from the Mount Lake Terrace Transit Center and then up north, sorry, Mount Lake Terrace Transit Center, kind of the center of our concentric circles, um, over to, uh, 44th and then up to the Linwood Transit Center.
Okay. So that's the, the one 12, which, uh, is projected to run every 20 minutes at peak.
Uh, yes. And that's part of Community Transit's long-term plans. They released a new plan, I think, in, uh, last fall. You have, uh, will also have commuter routes that'll run, um, along, uh, you know, the road in front of Lake Ballenger, um, and then across 99 and then down to, um, downtown Edmonds. You will have buses that go from the, this is a kind of a new piece is that King County Metro, um, previously was routing their buses from the Linwood Transit Center, um, and then, or Mount Lake Terrace Transit Center, my apologies, um, down, I think it's, they weren't going down 56th instead that they were going down, um.
Forty eighth.
Forty eighth instead. That's changing. They will now be routing their buses down 56th to, um, Highway 104 and then running a, um, high, uh, transit all the way over to Bothell on one line, which is new. They're also going to be routing buses down, um, Van Rys Boulevard, which is new as well. And I can't remember off the top of my head where that bus goes, but I do believe it comes, um, south through, uh, through, uh, King County. Um, you also have buses going, um, north along 56th up to, uh, to 20th and then over, uh, to, I think that's 52nd and then up again over to the Linwood Transit Center. And then this is new, um, along the very north, uh, section of the city from the Edmonds Transit Center, that kind of like jog down and then over and up. That is a new bus line, um, that goes along the top of the city that also will go to, um, the, uh, Linwood Transit Center and the light rail. Along 99, you will have additional connected access to, um, the, uh, the, the Swift Blue Line. And I think our last route here is running from the, um, Mount Lake Terrace Transit Center up 56th and then it'll go across the freeway there and then up 66th through Melody Hill. And that'll connect up to the Edmonds Community College, um, and also to the Swift Orange Line, which then connects you over to the Linwood Transit Center. So lots of connections here. We have, uh, identified sort of a half block to block buffer around each of those, um, bus lines, um, within commercial areas where it kind of makes sense, um, taking out school property and park property. So you see kind of a smaller buffer along 56th.
Okay. Um, one thing I would like to see is a frequency of those buses put into this map somehow. I don't know if you can put that as a color gradient or something, um, because I think, um, you know, what this map shows and something that really stood out to me is, uh, you know, buses, um, like you agree, they typically have a capacity based on their frequency and time and things like that. And light rail is like the most frequent and has the most capacity. When I look at this map and I see, I know the one 19, the one that goes kind of off to the left and then up, uh, to Edmonds Community College, and then the one 30, like, you know, coming down, um, 52nd, two 20th, down 56th and over to the Transit Center. Um, those have, those are, uh, every, running every 30 minutes. The one down 44th and over to two 36th is running every 20 minutes. Um, and I see in this map, you've got high density mixed use development near the existing nodes. And then I look at the Town Center and I see you've got expansion of transitional zoning around town transit routes. And this seems backwards to me, like, I don't understand fully, and I, maybe there's a story behind it of why I, cause I think the last time we saw this map, we were looking at building out the Town Center and then building out more of the Town Center and then, um, for the newer neighborhoods along two 12th and two 20th and at two 28th and 44th. Um, I thought we were, you know, building like maybe transitioning those from more auto centered uses through development, um, to something that is more of like a walkable downtown. But what I see here is, and then if we, could we, uh, go to alternative three? So here, um, we also keep the high density mixed use development near existing commercial nodes on these places that are sort of like, you know, half hourly bus routes. And then in the Town Center area that's on the highest capacity transit, um, we just have added as most capacity, medium density. Um, I would expect this to be flipped and I'm curious how this kind of came about.
One, you know, one comment I might make is it's, you know, planning happens in stages of activity. And so, you know, I think we're, we're looking at plans for transit that encompass what's, what's on the ground today for land use and serving that. Once redevelopment happens in these areas and we see changes in land use, then bus route frequencies are going to change and bus stop locations are probably going to change. So it's a little hard to, you know, look ahead and understand, you know, how will, how will these bus routes be in the future? What will the frequencies be? You know, because really that's something that'll happen once the land use is in place and, and the transit agencies plan for that. So I think it's just important to kind of remember that stages of planning and, and, um, what we're really trying to do is look at these corridors as opportunities. And these are likely going to be where transit is and where it stays. It's just the frequency of service and where bus stops are and things like that will change over time based on land use and redevelopment. So, so I, I, I think that's maybe helpful, I hope to, to mention that. Yeah.
I, I agree, but, um, I think kind of what gives me pause and why I think it starts to become backwards, especially as you go maybe down towards the edge of two 44th and there's like no buses there, is that like the level of service provided by the transit, like, you know, we have hard infrastructure in the light rail station at two 20, two 36th. And we have a potential for a station at two 20th, but we sort of need to work to make that happen. So I think it like, you know, like that is going to be a very hard neighborhood that we're, I'm glad we have sub areas like zoning for both of those, because I think like we need, you know, to make that work, we need not just, you know, bus stops at the corner of each of those, but I think we need something going down. And like, there's like going to be a process to work through that out. So I like, you know, I think that kind of makes sense. And, you know, high density, medium density, we don't know what those are yet. But I think my concern here is that like, you know, we're talking about rezoning the Town Center, but we're talking about lightly rezoning the Town Center compared to those. Like I, we went through a whole process for the sort of the Northeast quadrant there. But I think the understanding was that there would be similar processes or a similar, like, you know, it's phase one of like building out the full capacity around that train station. And when I see that we're, you know, for alternative two, looking at building townhouses, um, on the east side of the interstate and on the west side of the interstate, just leaving a single family, like that seems, that seems wrong to me.
You go back to two. So, uh, am I hearing that you, you think that we need to go ahead and plan for the highest densities? And, you know, one, one of the things that the alternatives analysis will let us do is understand what the differences are and what the, um, advantages and disadvantages might be. So for example, we might say, well, if we, if we rezone according to the land use of alternative two, that could limit and delay transit oriented development in that area that's of a higher density for, you know, a few decades, right? That's something that the analysis will tell us. And so it's just so important to remember that these are alternatives for further study. We're not picking them yet. We're going to let the analysis kind of tell us what the advantages, disadvantages and impacts are related to these. And then we'll come back and have a healthy discussion about that with you all and decide what's our, what's our preferred direction based on that analysis. So.
Yeah. And I'd also say there's been a conversation internally that the transitional zoning now is not what the transitional, uh, zoning in the future is going to be. It's very one dimensional. It was put forth to provide for town home development, which the city didn't have. I don't think you're going to see that moving forward. Um, so I would say remain open as to what's been in the past and what's going to be in the future is going to provide a lot more variety of housing densities and type. And this study is also going to talk about capacity, you know, transportation capacity, capital facilities, capacity, water, sewer, all those other things. And so location near the transit center is one thing, but then there's also those other things that need to be studied. And so, um, like our consultants are telling us, probably what we're going to do after we get done reviewing these alternatives is to say, there's probably the preferred alternative is going to be a hybrid, just kind of like what you did for the vision statement tonight. This means this, this means this. Okay. Where do we want to go and where is it, where are we going to put it?
Okay.
So, yeah, I just don't think it's townhouse heaven necessarily, just, yeah.
Can you talk a bit about some of the assumptions that are going to go into the study? Like what do each of these colors represent?
In terms of urban form, like the built form.
Yeah, or like you're probably just putting numbers on things at this point.
Cause I heard you say, we don't, we don't know what high density is yet. I, I, we will be defining that in the study better so we can all understand it. But, you know, in terms of what the marketplace is building now, it's podium construction, you know, five to seven stories. That's about kind of the, the max unless we get more, um, technology and cross laminated timber and, you know, the timber construction where we go higher with wood floors over concrete podium.
Saying that, I've been, I've been bringing that up for years.
Okay, good. So it, but for now it's, you know, five to seven stories is what you see currently in your town and Bothell and other places. It doesn't, it just doesn't financially make sense to build anything, say like between eight stories and 12 or 14, because it's just way too expensive. Steel construction is just way too expensive. So, so when we say high density, we're, we're basically talking about podium construction, five, seven, seven feet or seven stories, I'm sorry, maybe eight. There is an eight story building in Linwood that's done some kind of creative things with, um, the fire code and kind of, you know, looking at ground levels and how that works. But anyway, kind of going down a rabbit hole with that. But that would be the high density. The kind of transitional, we're thinking of that as being a mix of a lot of different middle housing types and could even include, you know, sometimes we say stacked flats or garden apartments. I heard that earlier, you know, so four, four story, 45 foot height limits, things like that, down to single family height limits, you know, three story. So that's, that's kind of it. And medium could be four or five stories, kind of in between, which is shown on the alternative three.
Okay.
I hope that helps.
It does. Um, thanks for clarifying that. So I think, um, looking at middle housing in the, especially within the close in walk radius of a train station is severe underutilization of the land. Um, I'm a little surprised we're actually studying it.
I don't, I don't disagree with you. And I think the study will give us the opportunity to really point that out.
So the study will then have, you know, you've got sort of a list of assumptions, like you've got, um, okay, A, B, and C are going to a more, you know, they're already multifamily zone, but they're going to a more modern form of multifamily zone is how I would phrase that probably. Uh, then you've got housing, uh, then you've got a couple of options for just, you know, it's not planning the, the train, the Town Center's other three quadrants at this point, but it is like, you know, saying, okay, what if we went to middle housing and then what if we went to high end? Like, you know, like the rest of the Town Center. Um, and then you've got, um, you know, roads. And then I don't fully understand why we put townhouses on arterials, to be honest. Like our, I don't think being in an arterial benefits housing, right? And then you're putting more housing like on the arterial where it's noisy, you've got a lot of traffic. And the sort of the assumption is that people are taking the buses. So they're like exposed to all the pollution.
And are you talking about the turquoise colored areas?
Yeah, the ones that go along the bus lines.
I see. Yeah. And I think it might be a little bit confusing that we say includes town homes and other middle housing types, because maybe it's putting a little bit too much emphasis on the town homes. You were just saying that, right, Kristi?
Yeah, I think that's kind of the past, but I also think, so this is where the study of the economic planning. So it's kind of like what we had with Town Center previously. You can zone a bunch of stuff commercial, but are you going to realize that you are going to automatically get a bunch of commercial in those areas? Um, you know, um, so, you know, you can zone something for a grocery store. Doesn't mean you're going to get a grocery store.
Right.
So I think the intent is that you're just providing for higher densities, more mix of uses than you do now, which in a lot of those areas is single family residential. And so what does that ultimately look like? It's something different. And to pinpoint that exactly, I don't know that we've done that, but it's going to be upzoned in some capacity. But to say along every bus line, you're going to have something other than residential? I just don't think it's realistic.
Yeah. And I think the, the, the critique of this is more like, well, why are you limiting the dense housing only to arterials? Which I think, you know, we'll sort of move away from here, um, as we look at this a little bit more further. But, um, the, one of the suggestions I would have is, um, you know, we kind of say high density mixed use development, expansions of transitional zoning. It might be helpful to give a more evocative name to some of these things that maybe also ties back into some of the vision statement, the stuff we did earlier. Um, like I think the, um, you know, high density mixed use development would be more like modernizing zoning codes at some of our existing activity hubs. Would maybe be a way of phrasing it to make like central places. I think your, um, transitional zoning along the streets, like when we were doing the Town Center plan, we kind of had this idea that 56 would be sort of the main street, but we're not requiring residential on, or like the commercial on it necessarily. So maybe something like a main street, like just kind of give it more of an evocative name so that we have, you know, the, this isn't, uh, this isn't just for the housing component, right? This is like kind of the structure of the city and then the economic vitality and the transportation plans all go into this, right?
Yep.
Yeah. So I would say like, you know, maybe you could even, you know, if this is based on transportation, um, capacity, like bus centered down village center or something, or neighborhood center. You know, the name, whatever the name is, um, I think maybe alluding to things sort of beyond residential capacity alluding to things sort of beyond residential capacity that start to give it a character that inform kind of what we're intending about this, or what the intent is for these growth targets, might be helpful.
Yeah, well, I think that's definitely something to think about. I think we were trying to, uh, in a simple way, call alternative two, meeting growth targets, you know, because we see that that, that's really an opportunity for us to dial in to those growth targets and know exactly what we need to do to meet those, whereas alternative three is kind of thinking above and beyond that and longer term and how we want to grow. So, I, I think within that, maybe there's some naming or framework constructs that we can work on, um, for your recommendation. One thing I would say is I do think, you know, kind of a form-based approach of understanding height with the density could be helpful, and we can talk about that. If you guys, your neighbor Shoreline, you know, has done a lot of rezoning around their light rail stations, and we worked on that, um, they, you know, had, they have form-based zoning categories in the light rail station areas, so they have, like, I think a 75 foot height and then a 45 foot height. And we were, you know, at the time when we were working on that, a lot of people said, oh, the 45 height's going to take forever. That's, there's not, there's not a market for that, it's not going to fill in. Well, immediately after zoning was adopted, started filling in immediately. So, if you want to take a little trip, that may be a good place to go look and kind of see what's happening around those station areas, because it's sort of remarkable, the different types of middle housing that are fitting into that 45 foot construct. And not all of them are 45, some of them are 35, but, you know, there's a lot going on there. So that might help just to kind of see what, what might be expected in, in some of those areas, so, yeah.
Yeah, I'd also say it's how, you know, after you get done with your con plan, then we have to reframe all the zoning, and, and we're aware of that. But just like in town center, I think it's important that if we don't want certain areas underdeveloped, just like we did in town center, we put minimums in there as well as maximums. So if you really want to see development occur, your land constrained like we are four square miles, that you're thinking about both of those approaches long-term because you don't want areas to be underutilized. But there is also a logical way to grow versus like, okay, do whatever the hell you want to do. We're just going to zone everything because that also doesn't work as far as a livable community. So you have to start putting some reasons behind where you're putting things, or then, you know, I think what the community is going to find is, maybe you don't want anything goes everywhere, and there's reasons why, because, you know, you can't serve every area capital facilities-wise, or transportation doesn't work, or, um, you know, impact, land use impacts to neighboring uses. So, it's not just like, whoa, let's just upzone everything all at once, too. Um, and the thought, too, of trying to limit around town center is we want that to grow from the core as well. So when you open just everything up, then, again, you're not really getting those areas that you, how you want them to kind of grow from the core out. It's just, just a hodgepodge, a potpourri of just stuff everywhere, so.
Yeah, and I think the rezone of some of these areas is going to be as similar as well, like, um, the 220th is going to take a lot of work to sort of make that a singular neighborhood, I think. Um, and, uh, some of these areas are just not that well served, like, they're high capacity, like, they're high, they're zoned already. Like, I would almost say the commercial node next to Taliswood over there should be developed at the same time as alternative two, because they're an underserved, like, you know, auto-dependent, but they're also high density, which is like the worst case. And I think my concern with some of these, especially, you know, when we're trying to make new neighborhoods, is that we are going to wind up with that condition where it's high density, but it's also auto-dependent. And, um, I think that, you know, looking a little bit beyond housing and giving these more evocative names will help, um, direct future discussion, uh, in the direction where we try to solve that problem.
So I guess we're going to ask the question. We really need to get moving on these alternatives because our transportation work, other people are relying on moving forward. So, in general, do these alternatives work, or do they not? And then we need direction to move forward tonight.
And, and I would just add, Christie, you know, the State Environmental Policy Act uses the phrase reasonable range of alternatives. Are we analyzing a reasonable range of alternatives?
Yeah.
So that's kind of what we're trying to hit here, right?
Right.
And, and don't, we aren't going to get fixated on the outcomes yet, because that will be when, once we define the preferred alternative later, after the analysis is done. But do you think we have the bookends? Do you think we have that reasonable range?
I think, um, for the high density zones that are on, served by bus lines, I'd like to see a couple of different options. And then for the town center, I'd like to see the transitional zone move to the other side of the interstate as well, because I think that will be more...
Is this all in alternative three, Adam?
Oh, sorry.
Let's pull that back up.
It's alternative two.
Okay.
And it's, it's in both alternatives, actually. Like, I think if you're looking at ranges, um, it'd be helpful to have sort of ranges for each of those new red circles or the high density mixed use. And then, because I think that's going to wind up, like, transit capacity is going to wind up having a factor there. And then, um, like, for alternative two, it looks like you've got transitional for half of the town center, and then single family zone for the other side of the interstate. And then for alternative three, you've got super high density or medium density everywhere. And I'm assuming that when this is rezoned, it's going to be built out for the next 20 years. So, um, I guess maybe this is a question for Christie as well, or y'all. Do we want to see an alternative to additional transitional zoning on the other side of the interstate to match alternative three? Or do we want, like, I guess what is the question we're trying to solve with this town center rezoning? Like, how much do we rezone it? Like, as Christie was saying, we want to rezone it kind of strategically, um, and rebuild it kind of strategically, like, how does that fit into this?
I don't know. Christie, did you want to, I mean, one thing I'll just say is, you know, we have to do traffic modeling, and I don't know if you realize how, how involved that is, but it's intense and costly. So, right now, we're really trying to keep it to three alternatives that we'll study and do the modeling, and that, you know, we need to look at utilities for three alternatives. And so, that's kind of why we're sticking with three, but we want to make sure we hit those bookends of, this is about the lowest end possible of what would ever happen, and this is about the highest end, right? I think when it comes to fine tuning the, um, alternatives, that could come once we have the analysis done. We could understand, you know, if we made some changes here, what that would look like.
Since I see 66th not included in alt three, even though it's within, you know, the half-mile range. So we can hash some of those types of things out later on.
It sounds like the...
This is kind of a, a scope of what we want to look at for each of these ranges?
If, if some things are in one alternative but not the other, that gives us an opportunity to point out the differences and why one might be better than the other, I guess is another way to look at it. So 66, so show me where, what we're talking about there as far as...
Well, so this, and this is kind of building on what Adam was talking about. So, so on the west side of I-5, we've added the pink, uh, medium density.
Yeah.
Because that's close to the transit station, but then there's like the small sliver that still exists in the single family zoning.
But in alternative two, it's not there, is what we're saying.
Yeah, neither of those are there, but in this one, and I'm just thinking, because I live in that area, it kind of makes sense, because there's actually some medium density zoned previously in that area, and then across the street there is. And so, in terms of gaining more housing potential, I was going to say, you know, one of those green lines should almost just go down 66th as well, which then makes you wonder, should all of Ballinger then be available for upzone over there? Because I'm also not seeing the apartments included, the Ballinger.
Yeah, Ballinger, it's, it's kind of a unique hodgepodge of apartments and condos. So obviously, the apartments have an easier time to redevelop than a condo would. And I know, you know, especially with the bike infrastructure that's been put in there and, you know, sort of the modal improvements that have been made, you know, at some point, you know, in the future, there, there might be some serious considerations for redevelopment of some of that area, to be higher density, I mean, the attractiveness of being within, maybe not walking distance for a less than healthy person, but biking distance, or obviously getting on a quick transit to the light rail station, or being, you know, the proximity to the lake and the park.
Well, and I'm also talking more to the consistency also, like 66th. I know the bus, so we've, we've added some of this buffering for where the zone, where the bus zones are, but there's also still some, so that you can see there's a little brown sliver island, so to speak. You know, that one is like a church and a couple of properties that theoretically could be upzoned to something larger. And then also, if you look at those lots across the street, which happen to be my neighbors, they all have double lots. And so that actually is an opportunity where you can have a little island of actually higher density, just based on today's lot sizes. And so why not just include those in the, um, step-down zoning as well?
In the, in the turquoises.
Yes, correct. Yeah, the lighter, the greener, the further out.
Yeah, we can take another look at that area.
There also used to be a bus that went down, for context, there was a bus that went down the rest of 66th before it started going up and over, um, the freeway. And so at some point, that always could be additional bus line with increased capacity as well.
It's tricky with the bus lines, community transit has kind of changed it so much over the years. At least, from, from my point of view, I've been here long enough where the numbers have changed, the routes have changed, it's, it's hard for me to keep track.
I think they follow the density more than we need to build to the bus lines.
Right.
Like, there's almost, we might be looking at that in not the greatest context of wherever we put density is likely where they're going to then move bus lines.
I think they're trying to be more proactive, and, and that's just simply because we have light rail. And so they're trying to build those connections now to those light rail stations, right? So Linwood, the 2 and Shoreline, Mount Lake Terrace, and then also, um, building off the Swift Lines on 99. So I think it's more deliberate now versus in the past, it was, hey, um, I need a bus out here, and, um, so then we alter our routes to come out there, and is that the best use of public resources? No. So I think, hopefully, what should be is the transportation and the land use are more step, in, in step with each other versus how it used to be, which is, this person did this, and this person did this, and, oh, wow, you know, we can't make these things join up very well, so.
But yeah, that is kind of a local comment, though, on 66th, where it almost makes sense to like increase that as a straight line all the way to, yeah.
To Ballinger.
And take a look at it, and where the condos are.
I know we've had that, you know, that conversation for 44th, you know, kind of connecting the two commercial nodes, um, yeah. If, if there's a demand on 66th as well, then it would, it would make sense. But to kind of circle back, you know, since we're sort of talking about the buses here real quick, I see on the map, I, I know it wasn't mentioned, but it's kind of hard to list verbatim all the different bus routes. I do see the blue line kind of on 228th extending eastwards into Briar, uh, so I'm assuming that that is representative of Briar's one commuter route bus? But since community transit is getting out of the commuter route business, have they indicated that a bus will still be coming out of Briar to serve the, um, the, the light rail station?
As far as we know, that's, that's the case.
Okay.
Turns three times a day, each direction.
Yeah, it'd be nice if, there'd be a little bit higher frequency, and, not that I say, oh, Briar needs to be better served, but Cedar Plaza is Briar's town center, essentially.
Sure.
Briar doesn't have any commercial by choice. So that's the reason why we have two commercial nodes on the east side of Terrace, because there's, we're capturing not only a small sliver of our town, but the entirety of Briar and unincorporated Snohomish County that, um, that's up there. But the other question I had was, when you were talking to Metro, did they, hopefully they talked about it, because they came to us and presented, um, a, a concept they have of introducing a, a new route type that was kind of like community transit's DART, where it's more, uh, helps feed kind of that part of Shoreline and Lake Forest Park that doesn't have routes where you can like, I guess, just call and they'll, they'll come and get you. It's kind of like a hybrid between an actual bus route and, say, like, an...
Kind of an on, on-demand.
Yeah, like an on-demand and, um, they weren't too specific, like, you know, like a, maybe like a microbus kind of thing, but it would be, it would be an actual metro, you know, route and driver. And when they came and presented to us, not only were they talking about that serving, okay, this, this might be a way to get segments of Lake Forest Park and Shoreline, some connectivity to our transit station, but also they, they envisioned that maybe even extending a little further north in our city to capture kind of, you know, sort of that north town center area as well. I'm just kind of curious if they discussed that at all with you.
I, I mean, I've heard that in talking with Metro in general. I don't know that, that they mentioned that specifically for Mount Lake Terrace, but it's good to hear that they mentioned that with you guys, yeah.
The only reason I ask is, in, in a way, that might influence some of, you know, what we're looking at here on the map, what, you know, sort of what's in play in terms of transit.
Yeah.
Uh, maybe not so much in the town center, maybe a little bit more towards east Gateway neighborhood, but again, there isn't a lot of commercial around there in, you know, any way, you know, to try and increase, you know, density in all of Gateway, maybe that doesn't make sense, but it's just, I'm just wondering, you know, hopefully that will, you know, if, if Metro does move forward with that, that's another option that hopefully could be captured.
Yeah, and I think that was the intent, too, along 244th, that, you know, taking a look at how that's developing along there and kind of those routes. It's definitely, though, towards the east, um, and I think that we're definitely going to see redevelopment down there at that Gateway area at, at a certain point. I mean, let's face it, um, because it was built, you know, um, old school, as we say, you know, with that kind of big commercial.
And you know, I've, I've been squawking for years about 244th and how we've kind of ignored it. It was on our plans for a while, and then...
Sure.
Council decided to take some of it off the plans and, you know, just look across the street.
Yep.
It's already happening in Shoreline.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
It's just, the only reason it didn't happen on our side of the street is just because we didn't have the zoning for it. So I think, I think it's ripe.
Yeah.
For development, but...
Yeah, I think that's what we're trying to acknowledge, that, that those areas, and particularly now that we have that connection from Van Ry all the way through to 244th, and then up to the Transit Center, it's logical that we're going to see some of that redevelop.
So I guess then back to alternatives for town center growth. Commissioner Morgan mentioned possibly extending the Green Zone down into the walk radius for the Transit Center. Do we want to do anything like that? And, I don't know, with, with your opinion, do we want to do something similar for alternative two? Or is that like, do you think it's better to strategize and leave? I don't know. In my, in my mind, like, if we're going to expand the town center, this is one of those things we would need that extra, like, sub-area planning for, because I think we had a pretty good one that had a strategy for sort of concentrating initial growth in the town center. And if we're looking at expanding that, like, I think that's going to need a deeper dive as well, but my understanding is this study is like, just a question of how much do we, how much more do we develop at that town center? Is that correct?
In part, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I think logistically, I think as long as we have the bookends, which, if alternative three, we add some additional transitional along 66 and Ballinger, we capture it in the bookend in alternative three, and then again, we can morph alternative two or three down the road to what that preferred alternative is.
Okay.
So I think if we change that, we capture that other end of the bookend, and then we kind of see. And then, we need to be careful, I know we want to start drawing lines, but we're just kind of, you know, doing areas now. You guys will have the chance to refine that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think looking at this, like, that was probably the biggest thing that stood out to me, was like, why is the town center, why is the, the tran, the, the train station like so underzoned compared to everything else, but...
Yeah. Yeah, I get you.
I, 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 I get the logic of, and would we then, I guess, medium or high capacity would just be five overs, but then they would be, you know, maybe five stories instead of seven stories or something?
The medium density, yeah. I would say four to five, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Is that something that we would actually want to include as a high density? Like, are we, is there a reason to limit that to four to five if we're talking about rezoning the town center?
Can we bring up alternative two again, just to look at that medium?
Yeah, because it looks like...
I'm trying to remember, what, yeah, what, yeah.
Yeah, because there's a high density, which is like the new bus neighborhoods. There's the medium density, which is the build-out of the town center. And then the transition zone is the one used in alternative two, which is just like, oh, what if we put fourplexes and townhouses throughout the town center? So like, the range of looking at redeveloping the town center, if I understand correctly, is we have townhouses and we have zone-limited five overs, basically.
Yeah.
And I don't fully understand why we're limiting the five overs.
We do have an area that we had upzoned even higher, directly adjacent to the, the town center. Now unfortunately, the developer has chosen not to take advantage of that zoning. But are you, maybe propose expanding that, that area to more parts of the town center as opposed to just directly adjacent?
Yeah.
To the light rail station?
I know, like, well, so within the half-mile or, especially the quarter-mile radius of the wa, the light rail station. Like, I don't know, like, I don't know, in my opinion, that should be like Vancouver, right? Like, you just build some, like, I think it would actually look a lot better if we just built some, like, residential towers next to the thing. We wouldn't have these giant massive buildings. I think I, people, you know, will say, oh, you know, I don't really want tall buildings, but then when they see the towers compared to the five, like, the seven, the eight-story, you know, buildings that were gonna go up and around town center, I think they'll say, oh, I actually like the towers better. But like, you know, sort of beyond that conversation, you know, the, the alternative we're looking at here is what if we build out the town center, but to a less, lesser degree?
That was my concern with the townhomes.
Yeah.
I think, I think we need to look at this again, because that's not the intent. I mean, the intent here is to hold the existing town center zoning to what it is. And are we calling it medium density right now? The town center land use? Sorry, I don't know.
I mean, it's, it's a range, right?
Yeah.
I mean, there's three zones.
Three different zones.
The, the most intense zone is minimum of eight stories up to 12.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, the intent wasn't to change that, so I think we just need to
Correct.
to, calling it medium density is maybe not exactly aligning with what's there. So we might need to just refine that a bit. Sorry for the confusion on that.
No, it's okay, no, because like, I think why I keep coming back to this and drawing this meeting out longer is that, like, you know, we're talking about maybe doing eight-story construction in some of these areas that are only served by buses. And we're doing five-story construction in the area served by the train, and we're looking at a range of development at the train. And what I would think this study would answer is, how much development can we put on the bus areas? And like, what is sort of the range of acceptable development near the train station? So that's why I was thinking it was backwards, right?
Yeah, I get it.
How intense can we make the bus?
I apologize for that confusion. Yeah, I think really what we're saying is that the, the red, or I guess it's kind of dark red, maroon color, and the pink color are really podium construction areas of mixed use. So usually residential over active retail service on the ground floor, mixed use.
Yeah, and so I think a lot of...
Unless there's some reason to make some areas just more residential only. But, you know, what we're seeing as being built is more mixed-use podium-style construction, so.
And so the question I think we'd answer there is like, can we build that out with more, you know, podium construction is the more modern construction compared to garden apartments? Like, you know, Hasko rebuilt that one project at the end of 52nd where it dumps into 99 as more modern construction. So I think the question we need to ask about that, like, a lot of this is already zoned multifamily. Then the question is like, can we support three stories of this kind of construction? Can we support five stories? Can we support seven or eight stories? And so like, I think that's like what the study would hopefully tell us.
Exactly.
Yeah. And then with the town center, it's like, do we build it out like minimally, or do you build it out fully?
Yeah.
And if we build it out fully, then we need a lot more study. But I think that might be the balance of what we're looking for here.
Well, I think the intent is for the next 20 years that we assume that what's zoned town center now will get built out in the next 20 years. It's just a question of how high, will the eight to 12 really go, eight to 12, or will it go eight or seven? You know, right? I guess you can't go seven, but...
Yeah.
It's probably beyond the scope of this task if it should be 20 or 30.
And that might have been, just thinking ahead to like, the, you know, timber technology change. But that might be something to look at, is eight to 12 really feasible in the marketplace? So we, we might want to take a look at that, Christie, but other than that, I think the podium construction, which would still be modern style, because you're seeing it, I mean, that's, that's what's down in, in the light rail district. And then you're seeing that, you know, in downtown Bothell and, and Shoreline in some places a lot, you know, next to the station where they're building, and yeah, so North Gate.
And some of this is feasibility of building types, right? Because obviously, you, between three and five stories, you have completely different types of buildings that then pencil out to completely different types of projects.
Exactly, yeah.
And so by, by creating a height limit, you are kind of limiting then that type of medium-density housing that can go in.
Yes. The eight to 12 is just, it might be too limiting to some of the pretty common, you know, podium-style construction, because
It's all five over. I mean, you're five over two unless you get eight over two.
It's the highest occupied level of the building that you can access is usually 75 feet in, in that tallest podium that you can build. And you can't build over that because of fire codes, you know, unless you can play around with a little bit.
Yeah, and I think that some of those things are coming online. I think the intent was there that, at least for the town center plan, that folks realized that. But they didn't want it to be underdeveloped in some of those areas
Right, yeah.
adjacent to the Transit Center. Because once it's developed, then it's gonna be there for a long time.
Yeah, I mean, maybe it just is a minor tweak from seven to, you know, 16 stories or something, because there is like that sweet spot at 14 stories where you can, you can kind of make a pencil, according to some developers.
Is that something you all have data on?
Yeah, our, we do. Our, our partners, Lila Consulting Group, that are part of the team, they work with developers all the time, so.
It's been, you know, it's probably beyond the scope of this, but if we ever get to the town center zoning plan, like, that is information that would have been very useful during the last iteration of this, so.
Yeah. Well, and a lot's changed.
Yeah.
The price of steel, for example, is one of those. So probably back then, it wasn't as much of a, you know, limiting factor as it is now, you know, in construction, so.
And then do they know when CLT will be widely adopted?
In Canada, it's really, you know, being used more than it is here, so there's, yeah.
Cross laminated timber.
Yeah.
It's like advanced timber building methods.
Yeah.
Thank you. So I know one of, one of the things that we were talking about earlier tonight, you know, with the vision statement, you know, was connectivity. One of the things that I heard previously, you know, in, in one of the CPAG meetings, you know, they brought it up as well, it's something that we've talked about in the Planning Commission for years, is the, the potential of creating new connectivity pathways? Is that gonna be taken into consideration when looking at these growth targets and calculations? Because if you open up a new avenue of connectivity that currently doesn't exist, that might feed, you know, development and access to some of these nodes? Is, is, is that something as part of this process would be examined? It's like, where would it make sense to add this? I bring, you know, I bring this up as like, you know, there's only, you know, right now, of course, this is pie in the sky, extremely expensive, we only have three crossings over I-5 right now. Would it make sense to have a fourth? Maybe that fourth is only pedestrian-based, or, you know, pedestrian and bikes, you know, it's cheaper to build than auto infrastructure. What about connecting, you know, having better connections through, you know, the central part of the city to the eastern part of the city? I'm gonna die, you know, I'll, I'll fight for this and die on this hill, but my 228th connector concept. You know, you know, you know, things like that, a little outside of the box thinking, we don't necessarily think of it right away, but it's, it's ways of connecting the street. Or maybe not as drastic as that, but just like, acquisition of certain parcels where, you know, you remove whatever's there and connect the blocks. You know, I, I still think that where Mount Lake Terrace Elementary School right now was a missed opportunity, since they just redid it recently, to not have 220th carry on, you know, through east, you know, in the eastward direction further. One, when the sound was developed, but two, when they tore down the school, that would have been your opportunity to, to do something different. And, you know, I don't even think that was under, under consideration. I'm sure the school district wouldn't have considered it, but if the city had kind of pressed that issue, that might have been an op, you know, it's an opportunity lost now, but maybe those opportunities exist in other parts of the city. I'm just curious if that is part of this analysis as well.
So multimodal transportation is part of the analysis that will be in the EIS analyzing these alternatives. And so that includes looking at, you know, all kinds of connectivity for pets, bikes, access to transit, and motor vehicles.
Creating new avenues of approach that currently don't exist.
Yeah, well, and, and improvements, what improvements are needed. I'm not sure that, that the study will find the need for an overcrossing, you know, per se, or demand for that, but there, it could point out that there could be advantages to that long-term in connecting areas that are, that feel isolated in the community, so.
I remember one of our, one of our previous commissioners, who would still be on the commission had he not moved out of town, shame on him. You know, when we were doing, when we were talking about, you know, how we've kind, we kind of ignored, you know, south of Melody Hill at the time, obviously, we're not now, we're talking about it. But the idea is like, what if, you know, Melody Hill or that south area, being so close to the light rail station if it weren't for the freeway? And what if, you know, there was a pedestrian bridge that connected that neighborhood? Say if it was being, if it was allowed to develop as dense as it could, could do, like how Shoreline has allowed on the opposite side of the freeway for their area? But, you know, walking all the way down to 236 may not make sense. You know, you got, you got the, you know, got a very steep hill. But if you had a, a pedestrian crossing that sort of met up with the inline station in the middle of the freeway, you know, something like that, you know, it's out of the box, you know, it was just kind of back-of-the-napkin kind of idea. But how all of a sudden, you've just created a new connection point and brought in a whole bunch of more people who would be able to walk to the light rail station as opposed to wanting to drive or maybe having to take a bus or, you know, in, in this area, you know, they got rid of the bus, they don't even have a bus right now, so. You know, it brings, it brings it into that, at that watershed, so. Obviously, I don't have firm numbers, but that, that kind of concept, you know? This is sort of outside of the box thinking.
Is this like a transportation element thing, like how they actually model the stuff, or like, is this?
You know, and, and never, you know, the discussion never got that far. It was, it was just like, what, you know, wouldn't it be great if? But we never seriously considered it. And I'm just kind of curious if those kind of considerations would feed into this.
Yes. Now's the time, if we still have energy, because we're gonna move on to subareas next, but to kind of point out some of those ideas, or tell us where they're documented so we can go back and pull those into our process. But yeah, this is exactly the place. And then we'll also be talking about transportation in a future meeting, so that's another opportunity to bring those ideas back to the table. So pull them out from your notes.
My 20 page, my 20 years of notes?
Yes.
Transportation has changed since then, we invented cars.
Yeah.
So I guess, the question for, for this body here, have we, I think we've, we've heard that there are some changes needed to the way that the maps and the alternatives are drawn. I guess, is there, I guess, two options, I mean, do we identify that there is a need to bring these back? Or is there a recognition maybe that we do have some very time-intensive analysis that needs to happen? So is there a trust that, you know, these changes can be incorporated and brought to city council to be studied as part of this process, and then further refined as more analysis is done on the process?
Yeah, and I think what I heard was what Christie articulated a little bit, was changing alternative three. So it's, it is representative of that forest end bookend by adding in more density along 66th and south to whatever that connects to Ballenger area, and recognizing Ballen, you know, Lake Ballenger area itself as having some redevelopment potential. So I think that's the big thing I heard for alternative three, yeah.
Yeah, and also alternative two and alternative three sort of differentiating. Like, I think council's gonna have similar questions on like, why is the Transit Center so underzoned?
Well, we'll fix that, because I think that's just the way that it's described is not quite representative of, of the actual intensity that's intended.
Yeah, and so what I think I heard here is that you're going to look at alternative two as a less intensive version of alternative three.
Yes.
You know, including the, you know, sort of new town center nodes that are on like 212th and 220th and whatever. Between alternative two and alternative three, you might look at different levels of intensity of how those will be rezoned, but they'll all be like, you know, kind of the same kind of construction. And then in the town center, you're, the question you're asking is, do we rezone it a little bit? Or do we fully build out the town center?
I think it's already rezoned, I, I don't
I mean, sorry, not the
Adding to the zoning.
The walk radius of the town center. Do we rezone it a little bit, or do we fully build it like the rest of the town center?
So alternative three assumes all the existing town center zoning builds out, plus we're adding more of that type of zoning, right?
Yeah, so I think as the alternative is currently drawn out, the areas that are adjacent to the existing town center boundary, but still within that half-mile and quarter-mile radius are currently noted as a medium-density residential feeding off of that lowest town center zoning. And it sounds like, as we look in that quarter-mile radius, that there's more of a desire to look at the highest density closest in. And then similarly to how the, the town centers have, you know, that range from four, six stories up to 12. We don't, we're not gonna sort of put eight stories through all of, you know, that area to the east of I-5, but we can look at ensuring that areas closest to the light rail are studied as that highest intensity.
Okay. And how does that relate to the areas of highest intensity for the 212? Sorry, I'm asking questions like I'm pretending to be council. How does that relate to the 220th and the 212th and the 244th and the 228th?
So the three zones in town center, we have an eight-to-12-story zone. We have a four-to-six, and what's the third? Six-to-eight? Okay. So I would say that, you know, just based the red, maroon colors that are shown, high density, those would be four-to-six.
Okay.
Four-to-six story, podium construction, maybe seven, you know, maybe, I don't know if we could do bonus dense height or something, but yeah, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, so it'd be similar to that second level.
Okay.
Six-to-eight, did I say four-to-six? I meant six-to-eight if I said four-to-six, I'm sorry.
So you're putting six-to-eight as one of the study options, and then alternative two, are you looking at a four-to-six, or is that?
I don't think so, yeah.
So you're just looking at six-to-eight everywhere?
That's what people want to build.
Okay.
But the four-story would be more that transitional zone, the, you know, middle housing zone that we're showing in kind of the turquoise.
Okay. So I think
Three-to-four story, yeah.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I think, I still have a question of why we're zoning seven-to-eight stories outside of the town center, but zoning four stories in part of the town center. But, you know, maybe that's something that they'll talk about.
Yeah, I think the background that I've heard on that is, you know, people didn't want town center to be a mono culture of building height, all one height. Wanted it to kind of look more village-like with different heights. And so that probably was taken into consideration. And we'll, we'll take a closer look at those three zones and how they relate to the other zones that we're talking about creating here. But I'm just also trying to give you the advantage of what, what is most feasible in the market for developers, right? Because otherwise, we could rezone it and it could sit there for a while and not get built, so.
What's, well, what's interesting is in Shoreline, so the, the little purple in alternative three that is
alternative three that is, uh, west of I-5, that's what's getting built out first, probably because the land is cheapest, because it's further away. Everyone knows that this area, you know, town center's been upzoned. If this were to happen, it could be that you actually do end up seeing the first bit of higher density happening on the other side of the freeway.
Okay.
That's what I'm seeing actually happening literally in Shoreline right now, if you look at it.
Yeah.
And I think that kind of feeds into the connectivity problem too, because that area on the west side of the freeway, up so close, you know, as the crow flies.
Yeah.
You're dealing with, you know, the huge beast that is I-5 cutting through there, but there is also a big elevation change.
Yeah.
So improving the, the connectivity, both dealing with the freeway and the elevation change, I think, you know, is, would be an important component of that.
And that, that could speak to a great separated crossing like you were mentioning, so, look at that. Okay, well, I feel, yeah, do, so is there a level of comfort then, that if we make those changes, we're basically ready to take this to council and then proceed with our analysis?
I feel like we still want two different levels of study for the red zones, but I'll defer to the rest of the commission on that.
Well, you said, you know, you're, you're studying all of it.
Right.
And then we can, if we, if we need to create a hybrid after you've done the study, we have the data.
Yeah.
Right.
We can piece that together now. I think the question is, is there is, between the alternatives that we have been presented, is anything missing? Because if it's missing, we won't have that data to fall back on later on if we decide, oh, we'd like to make alternative 2.5 and then throw in something that wasn't studied at all.
Right, which I think, for me, is for the high-density zones, having something that is less than exactly eight stories.
I see. So maybe it's six to eight stories in alternative three, but it's four to six in alternative two.
Yeah, like town center two is a good one, I think. Maybe that's like the analogy.
And then we can look at the numbers and, and, yeah. Okay. For the red, for the high-density nodes or zones, yeah. Nodes, they're called nodes on here.
If, if this, if this breaks the whole system, feel free to defer, uh, answering this question, but would any of these numbers potentially change if for some reason the heavens opened up and state law changed to make it more feasible to build condos?
Yeah, it's a good question. I don't think the unit counts would necessarily change, um, you know, I think the level of demand would remain the same, um, but it would, it would just open up more ownership opportunities for, for the community, right?
Yeah, it's just more ownership opportunities, so wouldn't be rental, it would open up.
That potentially could feed more towards building design though, and, and appearance, maybe they'll.
Well, I think we've always tried to craft our design standards that we're looking towards kind of minimizing these multifamily developments, and so, good design's good design, whether it's, uh, an apartment or whether it's a condo.
Yeah.
I think what you've seen historically in condominiums is not what's being built now, because it's just not going to pencil out. It's just like kind of a sprawling apartment complex, right? Because the cost is in the land. It's not, building's not cheap, but the land's where the huge cost is. And also, you know, getting, acquiring enough property to build something these days is very difficult. So when these bigger properties come up, there's a lot of people that want them, just because we're getting down to that finite, right, resource, which is land.
So it sounds like everybody's kind of comfortable then with sort of the bookends, the low end and the high end?
Yeah, yeah, I think with these changes, um, we'll have some decisions that we can, information to make decisions in the future.
Okay, that only took two hours to give you that answer.
Thank you, though, thank you, very good guidance. I feel like we're on a solid path, so thank you.
Cool. Um, so we do have two more items on our agenda tonight. The first one is a, a more interactive workshop about the subareas, um, where we would like to, we would like to get your input on what kind of, you know, improvements such as transit is, and transportation and, and street connections are needed as long, as well as other improvements, um, for the, sort of the north half of the city, um, and then talking through sort of what our next steps are in terms of review of the, the goals and policies.
I will, I will suggest though, that if people are feeling, you know, because we want a lot of energy for this next part, if people are feeling that it might be better to reconvene with that, that's something that we could bring to the meeting on the 28th, 26th?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, sorry.
I agree.
Okay, um, along with the goals and policies, yeah.
I mean, we really want it to.
Yeah.
We really want it to be an interactive process and not just be like, oh, let's do this in 10 minutes, um, because this is important work that we've talked about, so, um, we're coming back before you again, so I think we move this, um, forward. On the 26th, we also have a work plan. I think part of our discussion for the work plan is going to be what you're required to do versus what you want to do. I think you guys know what your work plan looks like, which is me telling you what you're gonna do. Because somebody's telling us what to do, which is the state. So I mean, I think we can do both and, and provide a more robust conversation on what we want to do in subareas versus now, like, hey, let's squeeze it in. So if that's okay with you, say, let's have this conversation on the 26th for subareas, if that's okay. And we've already changed our schedule to be meeting every two weeks for comp plan, so, just because of this, is to, to have these more robust conversations at the planning commission level. So we're getting your comments as we're crafting this, which is different than kind of how we've done it in the past, or at least more recently. Does that work?
How does everybody feel?
I don't want to cram it in.
I'm a night owl, but I don't want to keep people here until midnight who like, aren't paid to be here.
That too, but I don't want to cram it in, I want it.
Okay, so we'll bring this back and talk subarea, um, next go-around, if that works for everybody.
But I think we can still walk through some of the next steps and introductions for the, for the next meeting, um, since we also plan on the 26th to present the commission with the, uh, draft goals and policies for both the land use and the housing element. Um, and that meeting won't be a, that won't be a discussion point for the meeting, um, we'll be, we'll get into a little bit of that, but you'll get the goals and policies and then have, uh, two weeks to review those, um, and then come back with, with comments and a fuller discussion in March. All right. So these should look a little bit familiar. So as we start the goal and policy review process, um, we wanted to give just a little bit of refresher on exactly how this is working, um, on the content development side and what kind of information you will be receiving from the planning team on, you know, how the goals and policies were, existing ones reviewed, um, why new ones were, why they were changed, and why new ones were proposed. Um, so topics that we're looking at when it pertains to different goals and policies are, you know, thinking about equity, um, how, what is the language of this goal or this policy? Are there unintended consequences that we just want to be aware of or cognizant of as we pull together the language? We're also taking a note for, um, you know, is the language clear? Are we using jargon, simple word choice? Is the content of the policy still relevant, or does it need to be updated to continue to be relevant? Is there redundancy perhaps between, um, you know, similar policies in the same element or policies between two different elements? Um, you know, when you're talking about topics like land use and transportation and parks and capital facilities, you do end up with some overlapping topics, and that's something that we are aware of as we go through this process. And so we just be taking a note of, um, you know, where there's overlap, where there's potential redundancy, and, and making a note of that, so as we go through the whole plan, um, we can sort of highlight where the appropriate place is for topics to live within the comp plan. We'll also be noting, um, where existing policies are aligning with state and regional requirements. There, the comp plan policies do need to be consistent with both the GMA, um, the Washington State requirements for comprehensive planning, as well as regional requirements from Vision 2050, PSRC, the Puget Sound Regional Council's, um, long-range planning document for the Puget Sound region, and Stehalmish County's countywide policies. Um, so there's a couple different levels, um, that we're just going through to make sure that we can, you know, dot our i's, cross our t's, make sure that everything is, is consistent and good moving forward, and we're, we're incorporating both the needs of the community as well as making sure the plan is compliant with the legal requirements. Um, and then there'll also be a column that highlights, uh, where the new policies are that are suggested because of new emerging trends or because, um, they're being suggested to be compliant with regional requirements. So a little bit about, um, sort of the process here, um, so we have eight elements for the comprehensive plan. We have land use, we have housing, we have the environment, we have the recreation parks and open space, transportation, capital facilities, and utilities, and economic vitality. So we will be running through on sort of a rotating basis on these topics, starting with land use and housing. Our plan is to spend three meetings on each topic. There'll be a meeting where we get to introduce the topic, um, which we'll be doing tonight for land use and housing, going through the purpose and answering any questions on sort of, what are the legal requirements for that element? There'll be a, a second meeting, where we will just, we will have come to the meeting prepared, um, to distribute the proposed goals and policies for review, um, and you will get sort of that matrix, including all those notes that I just walked through, um, in a Word document format, um, with an additional column for general comments and the ability to make track changes, um, so that, you know, as you take home the document and review it, um, over, you know, a two-week period, there's the ability to, to track comments from planning commission. Um, and at our third meeting on that topic, um, we get to have, you know, that discussion. So after you've had the opportunity to make a thorough review of what's being proposed, um, we can come back here and, um, you know, review those comments and have a detailed discussion on, um, you know, changes, uh, moving forward. And, uh, we will have the opportunity at that point to incorporate your feedback into the revised, uh, goals and policies. I guess, any questions on that process before we go to the overview of land use and housing? Does that seem pretty straightforward?
I assume the mechanics of how you receive the Word document will be worked out?
Yes.
Cool.
All right. So the first couple of topics we're going to be working through with this commission is the same topics that we're working through with C, with the CPAG, um, starting with land use and housing. So the land use element, um, is really the element that is going to be the main focus of implementing, um, those growth area conversations that we've been having as part of the, um, as part of the growth alternative framework. It'll identify that future land use map, um, that'll implement, um, one of the alternatives or the preferred alternative that might come from a combination of, you know, all three of those alternatives, and will include, you know, those goals and that policy, in policies that will guide city growth. Um, so, you know, where do homes and businesses go, um, and also has, uh, goals and policies related to equity being that welcoming city, welcoming community, and healthy communities, and public participation. Um, so some of the goals, uh, for the element, um, as it's currently being drafted, um, we've listed here, um, there's about, there's five, um, existing goals, which may change as we've gotten feedback from, um, both the advisory group, and then, you know, once we discuss this, uh, element with planning commission, um, so, goal one, having a sense of place throughout the city to enhance livability, promote healthy communities, and integrate health and wellbeing in the planning process. Number two, uh, to encourage a cohesive land use pattern and transportation network that promotes mobility, provides transit options, and enhances access to goods and services. Um, so, you know, this is focusing on the, the goals and, a goal and policies focusing on the interrelationship between the transit network and land use. Um, a third goal, um, to ensure that growth targets can be achieved, so making sure that we have the city as adopting, um, land use requirements and zoning that will allow it to, um, meet those growth targets and meet the diverse needs of residents and businesses. Number four, which would focus on balancing development and critical areas, there's an acknowledgement that there are quite a few, uh, critical areas in the city and different geographic constraints that, you know, make that connectivity difficult. So, but it is one of those things that we want to do, is ensure that we're, that we're balancing those two issues in the city. And then five would be to coordinate with, um, other agencies on, um, you know, the legal framework that is, uh, planning and land use. So, none of this is final, these are all draft and will be wordsmithed as we walk through this process, but really the purpose in providing these goals for you tonight is to show just kind of the breadth of what is being discussed under this element.
I was just going to add that, uh, we are trying to keep this plan at kind of a readable, you know, absorbable level of information and not going way overboard on too many goals and policies, so trying to find that right mix. That said, you know, we certainly can add goals, if you see a need to add, add a few goals, we can do that. And then you will also be presented with the policy statements that support these goals, so there'll be, you know, three or four, there's no magic number, but policies under each goal, um, that you'll be reviewing as well to support that goal, and, and we can definitely add policies as well, or, you know, combine them, so there's some, definitely some work to be done, but just wanted to give you that sense, yeah.
So, it's a high-level place to start. All right. And then, so as we move on to housing, um, you know, housing, land use, very interrelated, but the housing element is, is more of a focused topic, because we really are just talking about, um, housing, um, within the city. So, uh, there's a lot of legal requirements that kind of go into what background information needs to be analyzed as part of this element, so, um, as part of a, a findings or, or background report, um, there'll be a lot of information that identifies key housing data, what is the existing stock, what is the existing characteristics of housing, what are the housing needs and housing affordability needs? We're working through a, um, analysis that looks at, you know, what types of housing is needed, different income bands, there's a lot of background work that is going into this element. But, um, the goals and policies are, we're going to provide the city with guidance, um, on, you know, on the housing supply, um, how to supply affordable housing, um, anti-displacement strategies, equitable development, coordination with regional partners, with other jurisdictions, with regional bodies, such as the housing authority, um, and also looking at permanently supportive housing. Um, so we currently have four goals outlined, um, for the housing element, um, one, which is to provide housing that is affordable to both current and future households of all income levels. Two, to support housing options for special needs populations, and this is where we're getting into some of that permanently supportive housing, emergency housing, um, sort of not traditional housing for, um, those who, who are struggling, uh, with, with homelessness or other, other, uh, special needs. And then number three, to provide stability for existing residents through anti-displacement measures, um, this is that goal where we can fit in policies related to anti-displacement, um, you know, helping people stay in their homes, whether they're, you know, struggling to, to, to stay in a home because they can't afford it or because they're getting older. And then number four, to promote access to opportunity areas by supporting an adequate supply of housing with access to jobs, goods, and services. Um, this is, you know, our opportunity to, and our goal to tie policies, you know, back to land use and back to transportation. to land use and back to transportation, sort of how all these things kind of work together to create the housing supply. So that would be sort of our high level overview. You will be seeing, you know, all of the all of these goals, as well as their supporting policies and supporting analysis for how this kind of came to be, as well as some of the feedback that we received from CPAG as well on these topics. Let's see, on our February 26th meeting. So this is sort of our working plan for the next five meetings. We'll continue to keep this updated as we come to each meeting so you can sort of have a have a look ahead, sort of what next topics we'll be discussing. On February 26th, like I said, we'll be presenting you with the recommended or draft recommended goals and policies for housing and land use. And we'll also have the opportunity at that point to revisit the sub areas conversation. And then March 11th will be that date where we have that in-depth discussion about your comments on the land use and housing goals and policies. And it'll also be your opportunity to introduce both the environment and the recreation parks and open space element. So you can kind of see how we'll have this rolling topics over the next couple of months as we come to you every two weeks, where we will spend some meetings having more in-depth discussion, some meetings will be more about introducing topics. We'll kind of keep rolling through these eight topic areas over the next couple of months with aiming to get that draft plan done by July. And then I think our last slide here is just to give a quick update on engagement and our next steps. So we have, I think, four key areas where we're focusing engagement over the next couple of months. We are working with another sub consultant, the VITA agency. They're going to help be helping us with targeted engagement approaches to make sure that we are getting in the right rooms with people who are currently underrepresented in our process. And, you know, whether it's focus groups or going out into the community and being able to work with members of the community that haven't currently been part of the process to make sure that they're having the opportunity to give comment on what we're preparing as part of the comp plan and be part of the process. As our second sort of pronged approach here is to plan a public workshop series in April. This could be a combination of focus groups or an open house, just different activities that would all be around gathering feedback on that revised vision statement that planning commission is is currently providing comment on, goals and policies that are in development at that time, and additionally, key needs in the sub areas across the city. And so our goal would be to take the feedback we've heard from CPAG, as well as the feedback from this this body when we have that conversation, and build to present some of those ideas back to the community to get their feedback. Our third approach here is to ensure that we continue to coordinate with the DEI Commission. So we will be bringing goals and policies and plan content to the DEI Commission as well, to have a more focused conversation about how equity is being incorporated into the plan. We'll also be working with the group on targeted engagement with youth engagement, as well as any other focus groups that that group suggests. And then lastly, we are working towards being able to have a draft environmental impact statement published in late spring. And this will be sort of the accumulation of all the analysis that's growing into that growth alternative framework and transportation analysis and and all of that work. And so when that is published, there'll be the opportunity to have a public comment period to gather input on the alternatives and the impacts that have been identified. And there'll be another push for engagement at that time to make sure that we're getting that distributed to the community and we're gathering the feedback. So it's kind of a very high level summary of sort of what our plan is. It is a, I'd say, working, working plan. So we are, you know, constantly trying to make sure that we're staying up to date on this. And I think that that might be our last slide here to wrap up. I guess, are there any final questions?
Actually, I I have one. When it comes to the public workshop series, I understand there's a benefit to having them here at City Hall with all the technological resources. But has there been any consideration to holding some of them in other locations throughout the city?
I think that I think that that's definitely something that that's can that can be considered. I think that the having the workshop series gives us the opportunity to be very, very flexible in sort of how we reach out to the public. So it may involve, you know, going to a school, or it could involve going to a church group or going to maybe a different community group. I think that that those are still things that need to be identified. And we'll also be working with the VITA agency as well to coordinate and make sure that as we identify the method that we're using to hold those workshops, that we're not that we're providing opportunity for for many different people to provide comment.
But if you have suggestions?
Well, I know the city's utilized, you know, the clubhouse down by Lake Ballenger, you know, quite a bit over the years for various activities. For you guys who don't know, you know, we used to have a municipal golf course down there, and that was the clubhouse for the golf course. We've now converted the golf course to a park. Clubhouse is still there. It's kind of the senior center now as well, I believe. For years, the city has utilized that, but, you know, over on the eastern side, you know, the the high school has, you know, a theater in their kind of cafeteria area is quite large. Not sure if Cedar Way Elementary would be, you know, a feasible place to hold that as well, but, you know, there's there's definitely quasi governmental agencies throughout the city, other than just City Hall. But at the end of the day, you know, the technological setup that we have now with the new City Hall might trump, you know, some of those other, you know, other places. But when it comes to, you know, outreach, you know, some people want to do it in person but don't necessarily want to come to City Hall. They want to stay a little bit closer to home, even though it's all relative, it's not really that far away. But the also, you know, newer technological opportunities for outreach, you know, with online. I notice you guys have tried to utilize online a lot now, you know, for people who can't attend in person or don't want to attend in person at all. So, you know, I'm assuming that'll probably be, you know, in in play for these various workshops as well?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yes, I think we do plan on, I think these are great, I think, suggestions for places to to continue to hold workshops. And I think we do plan to continue to utilize that online open house that was prepared for the scoping meeting to keep that up to date as we ask for additional feedback on these topics.
And then sort of piggybacking off the online concept, in our next meeting, when we kind of do this sub area exercise, in case our absent planning commissioner will still need to be absent due to a new bundle of joy, if he has time and doesn't face the wrath of his significant other, and he wanted to participate maybe remotely in that exercise, would that be a possibility for him? I mean, I'd hate for you guys to go through all the effort of setting it up, though, and he's like, what, are you crazy? No.
Yeah.
But in case in case he is interested in participating in the exercise, but can't, you know, can't make it in person if if that would be an opportunity for him. Or I guess for anybody who has a scheduling conflict that night and can't attend in person but still wants to participate.
Yeah, yeah. So so as long as they're here virtually, the way we plan on running the workshop is, since this is the planning commission and we do have, you know, public meeting rules, our plan is to, you know, through the the screens here to share, you know, a map on a PowerPoint slide and be able to annotate as we have a discussion, what are the major points that are where the commission is discussing? So if one was here virtually and was able to speak, they could participate, no problem.
Will we be having kind of like the setup that we've had in previous planning cycles, you know, years ago, and and what you guys have done with the the current CPAG group, you know, actually having printed out maps as well that we can kind of hover over and point and draw on? Or will this present this exercise at the next meeting just be all electronically based?
What we're planning on currently is to be all electronically based, and that is to, I think, meet the just requirements for recording for planning commission.
I would say in that case, I know generally the setup for work sessions is down here, but I think it would be extremely helpful if maybe for that we would locate up there so we have monitors in front of us, so it's a little bit easier to to see what you guys are talking about. Because, you know, big screen all around, but we got quite a bit of distance, too, so it's kind of hard to, you know, kind of make out the the finer points of what would be presented, whereas if we have the screen right in front of us, it might make it a little bit easier.
Yeah. The the view is almost better from this side of the table.
Not necessarily.
Oh, no. No, exactly.
Oh, yeah, that's a big difference.
So that can be accommodated, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do that.
Anybody else have questions, comments for the consultants?
Do you know for the engagement plan if there's going to be any targeted outreach to Melody Hill and Cascade Crest based on the sub area work that's going to be done for those neighborhoods?
We might find that that's a focus group area that we want to target as part of the upcoming April open houses. But that's something that we're still going through with the VITA agency as well as far as more defined plans for that.
Awesome, thanks. I was just curious.
Just follow up on that question. Are there specific groups of people in those two sub areas, or is it more just residents in general?
No, I think just residents in general. I know that, I think Melody Hill have like three people that responded in the survey or something. It was like dismally small for like knowing that the sub area work was going to be done. And so I just, I want just want their voice to be heard in in the plans that are being done for their neighborhoods.
It's too bad Vic isn't still on the planning commission because he was very in tune because he lived in that neighborhood and he always knew what was going on. And more importantly, he knew where the misinformation was coming from. And he was not afraid to confront it directly, so. Anybody got anything else?
When do we keep an eye out for our Word documents?
That'll be after the on the 26th.
Great.
How does that comply with open meeting requirements?
So, yeah, good question. So we've thought about that. So what we wanted to do is give you the time, you know, to to review and contemplate the words and the language. And so you'll be putting your comments into this word sheet individually, but you'll submit that back to to the city. We'll set a date for that. And then we'll combine all of your comments together and publish that for the record. So so keep in mind that that'll be part of the public record. And then we'll discuss those at your next meeting, which will be the open public meeting discussion of your comments. So, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And as long as you don't deliberate with each other while you're reviewing, there won't be any issues with that. So just needs to be brought back together as a group, discussed as a group. Yeah.
Anybody else? Last chance. All right, I'm not hearing or seeing anything, so I think that kind of wraps up our comp plan update for tonight's meeting.
Wow.
Thank you very much. All right, so moving on to item number six, director's report. Is that a hard pass?
I'll just make it really quick, just to let you know, we intend to go live with our new permitting system in March. And so just will inform you further, but we're working hard on getting the last wrinkles of that out before we go live. Also working currently on fee updates. Typically, that's done with council at the in November of each year, but based on some building and fire code reworking that stalled in the state, we waited, we've been waiting to see what that building code council is going to do. So we're working on those, just FYI, those will inform any development review fees and and the like there. And then just also, next meeting, you'll get some information on accomplishments for 2023 of the planning commission and reviewing your work plan, which will then go to council for you guys to present at a later date, too. But we'll go over that in addition to the other things on the agenda. And that's all I have.
Does anybody else have any questions for Chrissy? Not hearing or seeing anything, so we'll go ahead and move on to item number seven, miscellaneous business by call of planning commissioners. Anybody have any miscellaneous business, any known absences coming up? I am not hearing or seeing anything.
I just have a question.
Oh, yeah.
I'm going to miss the next session. We already got that on the books. But I'm really interested in the sub area planning. And so can I like submit written comment if I like watch the recording afterwards? Okay. I will do that.
Anyone else? All right, not hearing or seeing anything. So with that, I'll go ahead and declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.